Advance the slides, whoever's advancing slides. Stephanie, who's advancing slides?
They're working on it right now.
All right, awesome, thank you. Good morning, the City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for November 19, 2024 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chairman limit the number of people called upon to offer a comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise and raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Bede Barazza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First order of business is approval for hearing minutes. These hearing minutes are from October 24th and October 29th. I will make a motion. I'll make a motion that the minutes be accepted.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we will go to the extensions scheduled for 9:30.
Sorry, Mr. Stenbridge, so the chair will recuse herself from the extensions and Mr. Stenbridge will run this portion.
So just to note, we'll have six members voting on these extensions. So with that, we begin with case BOA 1173599 with the address of 535 to 537 B1. Next, we have case BOA 1392781 with the address of 9 West Broadway. Then we have case BOA 1298301 with the address of 17 Warren Place. Then we have case BOA 1101366 with the address of 75 Willow Court. Next, we have case BOA 1101368 with the address of 78 Willow Court. Then we have case BOA 1374777 with the address of 7 Dana Avenue. Next, we have case BOA 1360285 with the address of 30, of 301 Martin Vernon Street. Next, we have case BOA 946259 with the address of 30 Cumberland Street. Then we have case BOA 919610 with the address of 120 Gold Street. Then we have case BOA 919609 with the address of 25 to 37 Brentwood Street. Next, we have case BOA 657089 with the address of 157 Howard Avenue. And finally, we have case BOA 1344283. I would suggest all are asking for an extension up to one year to a year's extension. I would recommend that that we I'll make a motion to recommend that we accept the extensions.
Second.
Do you have a minute, please? Sorry about that, folks. Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, folks. So with that, we move on to the groundwater conservation overlay district. First case we have is case BOA 1658855 with the address of 207 to 209 South Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morant, I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. This is a Gcod only matter for a zoning complying project. I believe that Mr. Simonelli will testify that he has both necessary letters.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion? I'm sorry, is Mr. Simonelli here to confirm?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning, Christian Simonelli, Boston Raul Our Trust, and we have both Gcod letter, the applicant.
Great, thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1658107 with the address of 21 Wellington Street. I also see a note that the case will be postponed. If the applicant is present, would they please respond?
Yes, hi, Mr. Stenbridge and members of the board. My name is David Free and I'm an architect at Chewing Company. We are asking for deferral because we incorrectly input the project description that we have updated and it needs to be re-advertised.
Okay, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion to deferral.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
And just to clarify, it is being deferred until December 10.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have groundwater conservation overlay district hearing. There are nine companion cases in this category. And I'll begin with case BOA 1634586 with the address of 334 Sharmat Avenue. Then we have case BOA 1634585 with the address of 328 to 330 Sharmat Avenue. Next, we have case BOA 1634600 with the address of 79 West Brookline Street. Then we have case BOA 1634598 with the address of 75 West Brookline Street. Next, we have case BOA 1634592 with the address of 10 Upton Street. Next, we have case BOA 1634591 with the address of 638 Tremont Street. Then we have case BOA 1634584 with the address 2 Equidilla Street. Then we have case BOA 1634588 with the address of 401 Sharmat Avenue. And finally, we have case BOA 1634488 with the address of 403 to 405 Sharmat Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain, it's the board.
Hi, Jacob Taylor, Klein Hornig, 101 Arc Street in Boston. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm counsel to Inquisitos, Bodigas, and Accion, or IBA. IBA is a nonprofit community development corporation with a long history of developing and preserving affordable housing in the South End. And I also represent the applicant here, Casas Bodiquin Apartments Limited Partnership, which is an IBA affiliate that owns the Casas Bodiquin project. Casas Bodiquin is a 36-unit scattered site affordable housing development located at various addresses which you read out. They're located on Sharmat Ave, Tremont Street, Awadilla Street, West Brookline Street, and Upton Street in the South End. And this matter comes before the board because IBA intends to rehabilitate the properties and preserve them as affordable housing. With respect to the last matter that you called off, in connection with this project, IBA also intends to convert another property, which is currently in its portfolio and located at 403 Sharmat Ave. It's currently underutilized office space and it intends to convert that space into six new units of affordable housing. All of these properties are within the multifamily residential or multifamily residential local services sub-districts and the groundwater conservation overlay district. The scope of the work with respect to the existing Casas Bodiquin residential properties will consist of kitchen and bath upgrades, exterior masonry work, roof repairs, insulation and efficiency upgrades, and electrification of some of the building systems. And these will require conditional use permits under Article 32 because they're in the Gcod and the applicant has obtained Boston Water and Sewer Commission approval of the groundwater recharge systems and submitted approval letters to the board and has provided a no harm letter from our civil engineer, Devila Serin. The development of the final property, 403 Sharmat, into six units of affordable housing requires relief as follows. It requires a conditional use permit under Gcod as well. And we also need variances for off-street parking, usable open space, and floor area ratio. The floor area ratio is needed because there's a small increase in countable internal floor space due to building reconfiguration and decrease in mechanical space. There'll be no changes to the building envelope for 403 Sharmat or for any of the other sites. IBA's held a number of community meetings with neighbors and butters and has received positive feedback with respect to the project. With that, I'll turn it over to Jason Dulong of IBA to provide a little more background on IBA as an organization and on the project. Jason?
Thank you, Jacob. Good morning and thank you all for your time today. My name is Jason Dulong and I am the director of facilities for IBA. IBA has been an integral part of the South End since 1968. IBA is a nationally recognized community development corporation dedicated to empowering individuals and families to improve their lives and achieve socioeconomic mobility through high-quality affordable housing, education, financial and resident empowerment, and arts programs. IBA currently has 667 units of affordable housing in its portfolio along with five community programs, including early education, youth development, financial empowerment, resident services, and the arts. This project, including the 403 Ave building, will create six more units of affordable housing by converting office space into housing. We are very excited to contribute to the housing needs of our city and state during this time when it is so very needed. With that, I will turn it over to Leah Shealy of Davis Square Architects to provide a little more background on the site and the project. Leah?
Hi, thank you. My name is Leah Shealy from Davis Square Architects. Jacob talked about most of the scope for the project. All the existing buildings, they're all existing residential. We are not changing the exterior envelope, we're just rehabbing everything. I wanted to talk a little bit more about 403 with the variances, specifically the floor area ratio one. We needed a variance for that one because of the existing building on the second, fourth, and fifth floors. We have a storage space in the existing office and we are now taking back that space and bringing it back into the apartments. That's why we needed more floor area. Open space, the existing building on 403, 405 Sharmat is on the paragon and all four sides. So we really don't have space that we can add to give open space and we're keeping this existing building. And then the other one for parking is because this is in an area where we don't, we cannot add any more parking, we are utilizing the existing street parking in the area. So I don't have much more to say, the scope is just rehab of all the rest of the buildings.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, are the units to be provided for rental or homeowner chip?
They're rental.
Yes.
And all for the work?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, this will be financed, you know, all of the different properties will be financed together as one larger affordable housing project. The first eight matters that were called are already functioning as one combined affordable housing and the new six units will be integrated with that.
Thank you. Is Mr. Hampton available from planning department?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you, everyone. Good morning, Jeff Hampton from the City of Boston Planning Department. This, it's not that we're opposed to this project on its merits. As you can see in our recommendation, it was purely because of the first floor residential unit that is in a C-FROD. Even though 25A doesn't apply because it's not subject to small project review, we have been consistently opposed to those projects where the units have, are either in the basement or the first floor that are below the base elevation. And that is the reason why you see our recommendation for denial without prejudice. It's so that plans can be reconsidered to remove that residential use on the first floor. It's not so much that we're opposed to this use at all, it's just that first floor unit in our consistency opposing that stuff, the C-FRODs, not only in the South End, but in other sections of the city where C-FROD is prevalent. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
I think, though, we could potentially only approve it for Gcod only, you know, with all the remaining projects.
Do you mean approve it for Gcod and not for the residential use?
Yeah, I mean, it came as a package, so most of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of them are for Gcod, so you could approve Gcod only for all of them, so they don't have to appear in front of you to ask for Gcod.
Ms. Bede Barazza, I mean, this might be a good question for Stephanie, too, is that if you could put a proviso on there removing the first floor residential use.
Right, then, yeah, then they wouldn't have to come back. I guess the question for the applicant is, are they willing to sort of remove the first floor residential unit?
Well, that's what I was looking at in terms of the plans. The only tricky thing is, is the elevator. So I was wondering about whether they just need to re-look at the project with the elevator in mind because if you don't necessarily want to have access to the residential from the commercials. So it's not as easy as, that adjustment would need to be put in front of the BPD.
I see. So I, I guess, this is coming as a bit of a surprise. I wasn't aware that the planning department had concerns on this. I just wanted to be clear, this is, it's not above grade, this space. It is at street level. I don't know if that affects the analysis there or not.
Well, it was pointed, it was pointed that the design of the first floor and on the first floor is two foot lower than the base level elevation for sea level. So it would have potential flooding. So you would need to raise that level and then you have to look at accessibility. So I think it's a design issue at this point.
Any other questions from the board?
So I guess, you know, if, if, if the board is not inclined to approve the six units, then I guess we would ask that we get a provisional approval with respect to the Gcod and the remaining relief required for the, you know, the five, for floor units.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to.
Sorry, Mr. Simonelli.
Not a problem, Christian Simonelli, Boston Raul Our Trust, one of my chair members of the board. And we have all of the required Gcod letters from the applicant for all nine addresses. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Now may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval for Gcod only on all the cases that we've heard in front of us.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Can I just ask for a brief clarification? So with respect to 403 Sharmat, is the board denying all of the relief? Or are they just denying relief with respect to the first floor?
From the motion I heard, we are, we're only approving Gcod at this point.
So yes, I think it's an administrative issue with Caroline. Caroline, do we need to vote on the actual application for with the first floor unit for the change of use?
Well, it's the whole building change of use, correct?
That's for 403 to 405 Sharmat.
Yes.
So we need to deny all the conditional use?
Do they just, do they just come back separately on that since we've only approved Gcod? Or is there an additional vote we need to take, Caroline?
Since the motion was made just for Gcod only, they would have to, yeah, they could just come back. I don't think we'd need to unless, Madam Chair, you would feel more comfortable doing a separate vote.
Nope, as long as we're clear that you would just come back, you know, you've heard feedback here and, you know, you can see if you can make any adjustments.
But it seems like we didn't handle that case.
So, Madam Chair, I'm thinking, would this be something, just to make it clear for everyone, that we would vote to approve the Gcod for every project? And then for 403 to 405 Sharmat, that would be more of a DWAP? Is that?
We can make a separate motion. So we've already voted on Gcod approval for all of them, that includes 403 Sharmat. If, if there's another motion specific to 403 Sharmat Ave, I would appreciate that motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion for 403 to 405 Sharmat Ave to deny without prejudice for the request of the conditional use.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we'll move on. Through the recommendations from the recent self, uh, November 11 self-commission, I'll read through the outcomes and then we'll ask for a motion for, to, to approve or not. We begin with case BOA 1644118 with the address of 4 Cross Street. This was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1562426 with the address of 30 Dwight Street. This was approved. For case BOA 1649258 with the address of 43 Bowden Street, that was approved. For case BOA 1651513 that was, with the address of 28 Myrtle Street, that was approved. For case BOA 1660656 with the address of 59 B East Broadway, that was approved. For case BOA 1599485 with the address of 309 to 325 Old Colony Avenue, that was deferred until, until today. For two companion cases, case BOA 1640459 with the address of 5 to 7 Denver Street, along with case BOA 1640461 also with the address of 5 to 7 Denver Street, those were approved. And finally, case BOA 1649103 with the address of 2 Michael Road, was approved. And those were the cases on the self-commission here on.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval for all the recommendations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Well, I don't think I voted.
Oh, oops, sorry. Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we'll move on to the hearing scheduled for 9:30 AM. Uh, we'll ask at this time if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe.
Mr. Stenbridge, good morning. It's Attorney Richard Lins. I have 64 Harvest Street for deferral.
That would be case BOA 1, 163, 52, 45, with the address of 64 Harvest Street. Uh, would you go ahead and explain with me, one?
Sure, thank you. Mrs. Stenbridge, good morning. Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lins, business address of 245 Summer Street, East Plus. I was recently retained for this matter, and I did have some questions on some of the plans and perhaps want to suggest some updates with the plan itself and have those reviewed with ISD. So we're requesting a brief deferral in order to address that.
Caroline, what's the next available date?
They could do December 3rd, December 10th, or January 14th.
Uh, December, December 10th, please. Thank you.
That, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer till December the 10th.
Sit back in.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Stenbridge, 5 through 11 Ashmont Park, please.
So that would be for case BOA 159, 79, 17, with the address of 5 to 11 Ashmont Park. If you would, would you explain to the board first?
Great, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. We're here requesting a deferral. The advertisements were incorrectly mailed to the addresses, and they need to be resent out. So we've been provided a date of December 10th. So again, just asking for a deferral until December 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to defer till December the 10th?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Hearing no further request, we'll withdraw with the deferral. We move on to the cases scheduled for 9:30 AM. We'll begin with case BOA 164, 32, 27, with the address of 423 William F. McClellan Highway. If the applicant, the end or their representative are present, will they please explain case in court?
Good morning. Attorney James Costello, business address, 7 Howe Street, Watertown, Massachusetts. I sent the packet in for the board. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to review some of the materials. But let me get right to it. This is a proposal that was heard about a year and a half ago in which the board voted for three in favor, but obviously, we didn't get the super majority. So we were denied. We were encouraged by all of the neighborhood to reapply again because every one of the neighborhoods actually in favor, or most people are in favor of it. So we applied again, and here we are. The gist of the argument is the neighborhood where we're going to propose the billboard is a total eyesore. It's overgrown with weeds. There's two decaying billboards in the packet. You could see the rust has been there for years and years and years. It's all invasive species, and it's a dumping ground for garbage for, for everyone. And a lot of the neighbors aren't too pleased with that. And also, is rats that are the size of cats and coyotes that are residing in this mountain. One of the better parts of the proposal is there's no residential impact whatsoever. The hill on 1A is about 100 feet high, and the proposal of the billboard, the maximum height is going to be 60 feet. So no residential impact is involved here. That's one of the most important things. Maverick Media has a proposal where we're going to remove at our cost two of the corroded signs. The signs are, they're, they're 60 years old, minimum. They're on both ends of, of the, the mountain, and we're, we're going to take them away. We're going to maintain the landscaping of the hill. We have a 30-year lease with a landscaper, and we're going to maintain the top of the hill, and we're going to maintain the, the whole hill totally at our dime. One of the other significant things that wasn't articulated the last time was one of the flips, it's a digital billboard, a two-sided billboard, and one of the flips, we're going to donate to the community. I do a lot of work in the community. I do work with the Park Warner. Whenever there's registration, Park Warner will be advertised. Phil 340, the headmaster's on board with us because there's going to be a student of the month advertised. I do a lot of work, legal work, with the Latino community, and they're going to get free advertisement. It's basically going to be the East Boston flip. That's what we're going to call it. The community board, like La Rabananzia, they'll get some free advertisement. La Toraza will get some free advertisement. We're going to give back to the community. And that's alongside of all the public service announcements, the amber and silver alerts that we're going to do. I've done substantial, and Maverick Media's done substantial outreach work to the community. I'm sure that you have in front of you. We have approximately 500 letters of support and emails. Our most recent abudders meeting, there was no opposition whatsoever. We got a favorable vote from the Orion Heights Neighborhood Council. The state rep, Adrian Medera, just sent in a great letter for us. I spoke with the district counselor yesterday. She's totally on board. We got Erin Murphy, a counselor, on board. Lydia Edwards, the state senator, is supporting us. The local union, Union 35, the painters' union that's somewhat associated with billboards, they're present supporting us. And all the local nonprofits, the Hillelions, the Park Warner, the YMCA, the Soup Kitchen, they all wrote letters in favor. So we have all the total support whatsoever. The most important thing, too, is that, that it's just a total eyesore. And actually, it's not even a safe area. I don't think anyone walks down that mountain anymore. So the fact that we're going to provide public service announcements and the fact that we're going to give a flip to the East Boston community, I think, is big. Also, I just want to remind the board that on one previous occasion last year, this very board voted unanimously in favor of the Polish-American club. And I think we fit right in stride with them, nonprofit. We have a great argument for, for a variance because of the topology of the mountain. There's nothing that could be put there. Also, we have no community impact whatsoever. The residents will not be able to see the board, and we got tremendous support from the entire neighborhood. Based, based on that, I would hope that you guys would vote in favor of us. And if you have any questions, feel free to fire away.
Thank you, sir. Are there questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
So you said that, or, I was wondering, how would the billboard prevent some of the issues that you stated earlier, such as trash dumping and pests? You know, I hear you'll probably clean up the area, but what, what ongoing work will be done? It just doesn't connect.
Yeah, we're going to have the ongoing landscaping. We got a contract that it's either going to be bi-weekly or bi-monthly, depending on what it is. The fact that we'll be running the billboard means that there'll be someone up there will be watching over the billboard as the poster now with this somewhat neglect, unfortunately. But we'll be there. And just our mere presence alone, I think, will dictate that it will, it will be a much better situation than it is presently.
And, and you said there are current signs there today. Who, who owns those signs?
The church does, the church. And, and you can't even see on the signs. You know, one of our strong supporters, Sal Amatina, the former city counselor, is in favor of this project just to take those signs down. They're, they're rusty, they're blank now. They used to have the advertisement of the Madonna on them, but you can't even see anything there anymore. It's just a blank sign. I'm surprised they haven't been vandalized to this point yet, but we're going to take those two signs down. There's one on the, the north side and the south side, one on each end. We're going to take both of them down, and we're going to put up a two-faced billboard sign. So there'll be one, one billboard, a tamapole billboard, in place and taking down these other two signs.
Does, do we have a presentation any more than just this?
I sent the packet in.
Oh, okay.
It should have photos of where the billboard's going to be. It should have photos of the old rusted-out billboards. It should have photos of, of the trash and, and the invasive species that's there. I mean, there's constant complaints from the neighbors. As a matter of fact, a year ago, what we did was we cleaned up the top of the mountain, and all the neighbors were impressed because they got a view of Boston because the weeds were literally 10, 12, 14 feet high. We cleaned it all out. And people, actually during the summer, they were sitting there just, you know, watching, watching the city of Boston. And all the neighbors were just coming up and thank, very thankful for what we did.
So just to be, so just to be clear, the signs are, are literally not being, not being used these days?
No, they, they, the church can't afford to, to put anything up there. It's, they're just blank. There should be something in the packet that shows them all rusted out, and, and the face of them, it's getting whiter and whiter as time goes on.
Is the, can you clarify that, is the billboard going to replace one of those billboards? Or is it in a different location?
No, we're going to take down the two, and we're going to put it somewhere in the middle of the two, and it's going to be a single tamapole with two electronic faces. And like I said, if, if there's a place for a billboard, it should be on, on Route 1A because it's, there's no residential impact. It's all commercial up there. It's all commercial, and it's going to be modern technology as the poster. If, if you would, just take a look at the poles, they're rusted up.
Where's the existing, where's the new, where's the location? These are all three existing. Where's the location on here?
On, hold on.
On this point of the new billboard? Where's it located?
Existing billboard, existing billboard.
It's all existing.
Oh, there should be another one, tell them.
And you, can you flip up one? Right there.
So it's basically...
It's right there. You see it?
Where the arrow is?
Yes, that's, that would be the, the two-sided tamapole.
Okay.
It's only a three-foot tamapole, and the majority of the foundation, actually, the whole foundation is underground. So all you see is the three-foot tamapole, and it's, it's only, the height's only going to be 60 feet. And we've even negotiated somewhat with, with the community. If they want it lower, we'll put it lower for them. We'll put it low.
But it says existing static billboard where you mentioned it, you're going to demolish it.
That one, yeah, that one, yeah.
It should have said, it should have said, remove existing billboard.
My apologies. I should say that.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you for the question.
And how close are the nearest residence?
The nearest residence are on the top of the hill. So the hill is 100 feet high. So they're probably maybe another 100 feet in from there. So 100 feet up and maybe 100 feet in would be the closest house.
Who owns the land in which the billboard's on?
The, the vines? The Sons of Divine Providence. I, I call them the Catholic Church.
Okay, and so they're leasing to Maverick Media?
Correct, correct.
And, and because you pointed to the, the past project of the Polish-American Club, the funds from leasing of that land was to help maintain the Polish-American Club open?
We're going to...
It's going to be very similar to the church?
Yes, hopefully, we're going to have Attorney Jeff Turkow explain that aspect of it. He, he should be testifying when, when there's an opportunity, and we have him going to explain your very question.
Is he part of the applicant? Should we have him speak now for clarification, or is he in a butter?
Yeah, he, he, he's, he's, um, he, he's an attorney for the church. So if you want him to speak now, he could speak now. If you want to wait until later, it's up to you, Madam Chair.
I think, I think that, that would be helpful.
Yes.
I see him in the chat.
I just unmuted him to speak.
Thank you. Attorney Turkow?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the, the board. Attorney Jeffrey Rosario Turkow, I represent the Sons of Divine Providence, which is a independent Roman Catholic religious order, but is not part of, is, is not the Catholic Church so-called. The Donor and the Fathers, as they're, they're known in the area, have been on the hill for decades with the Madonna Shrine. It's this agreement, why we entered into it with Maverick Media, is, as you know, all nonprofits are struggling today to raise money, independently utilize their resources. The church on the hill serves, serves a lot of low-income communities. When we talk about diversity and inclusion, if you look at who the church serves there, there's a vibrant Brazilian community, a vibrant Spanish community, what remains of the Italian community, and just general people at large that participate and go to the shrine up there for mass or for religious services. The cost of, when they built the shrine, they built it sort of in the Italian style on the side of a mountain, which today we'd say they probably needed their heads examined for doing it. But back then, they wanted it to be a little piece of Italy in Orion Heights. And as a result, the cost of maintaining the site every year gets larger and larger. And so when Maverick Media, we engaged the discussions with Maverick Media, we said, how can we create a revenue source for the shrine, for the religious order, to help preserve their presence on the hill long-term? And that's what we have with this lease here, which would provide a monthly lease payment to the, the Sons of Divine Providence to maintain the shrine. And, and in addition to that, would also provide, we'd replace the two dilapidated billboards that advertise the shrine. We have a reserved amount of time on the billboards to, you know, the electronic billboards to replace that. The Sons of Divine Providence have been on the hill, as I said, for decades, and one of their concerns is making sure that they were respectful of the neighbors. In the original presentation that was made before the board, it showed that the billboard, the, the hill is about 100 feet high. Houses are recessed from that, and the billboard itself won't, won't, the height of the billboard, I think, won't exceed 65 or 70 feet. And then, of course, the lights on these billboards are all designed to flash down, not up. And so nobody on the top of the hill, even the closest house, will actually be able to see any, you know, light that comes from this because it's so much lower than the hill will obscure it and because the lights are pushed down facing in a downward direction. So as not to disturb the neighbors. But the other part of it is we, the Sons of Divine Providence insisted upon was that as part of this lease, Maverick Media would be required to have in place a written contract, and it, and it would be a violation of their lease not to continue to do it to maintain the hill in a clean fashion. We're only renting, I think, 500 square feet of land on the hill to them, but they've agreed to clean, keep the whole hill maintained so that the, the abudders and people's advice, see something nice and not overgrown. And I think that'll help address the issue of, you know, it's sort of the old broken windows concept. You know, if, if people are dumping there because it's hidden in the weeds, more people will dump there. But if the weeds are cut down, then the intention would be that, you know, we wouldn't have as much of a problem for them, for Maverick Media than assuming the cost to clean up. I hope that answered your questions. I'm happy to answer anything else. And I thank you for the consideration today.
Thank you.
Oops, sorry, I have one more question. Can you please speak on why the owner of the land have not maintained their property all these years? And as the lawyer mentioned, there's huge rats and rodent issues that typically can go to neighborhoods. Is there, can you please elaborate why there's been such low maintenance on the property from the owner?
Yeah, I, I think at the top of the hill, we are, so if, if you know the area at all, you have the shrine, but closest to the edge of the, of the hill, closest to McClellan Highway, there's a cross that's, that for years was not lit. They finally, they got some, and some money invested to get the cross relit. They built a beautiful little parky area around there. And as they started to do that, neighbors then started to, I think neighbors knew the church was struggling, that the order was struggling financially. And so nobody was pressing them on it, and it was sort of, you know, you use your money, you use your limited resources to carry out the mission of helping the poor and the needy that are, that are going to the parish as opposed to doing the landscaping. as opposed to doing the landscaping. Once they fixed up the area and people saw how nice it could be up there and put this little park up there next to the cross at night, I think that then highlighted the issue. People saying, you know what? We need to do a better job with getting that done. And so the religion, so part of the discussion of how do we generate more revenue so we can, we can do our part to make sure, you know, if you know the area at all, if you are, you could be at the shrine and never see the side of the hill because it's sort of far enough away. And I think it was literally out of sight, out of mind. If you look at the areas that they do maintain with the shrine, there's never been any complaints from neighbors or abudders about the condition because they maintain it pretty well because they want to make it a welcoming environment. And I think this proposal, hopefully, will give them the resources and obviously the financial obligation on Maverick Media to make sure that they do their job to keep this up to date for, nice and clean for people.
Thank you. Let's open it up to public testimony.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Ava Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 423 William F. McClellan Highway, my office would like to go in support of this project. A community process was conducted, including in a butters meeting held on September 10th of this year, which was attended by about nine constituents. The primary feedback of this meeting was supportive about the proposal citing help to the church and the beautification of this area. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with Orient Heights Neighborhood Council during the first community processes that this proposal had been through and they expressed support then and they are allowing the applicant to maintain the support that they provided then. Again, at this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Parafin, Councillor Colletti's office. The councillor would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
Robert?
Good morning. My name is Robert Haas, District Director for Senator Lydia Edwards, and Senator Edwards would like to be recorded in favor of this project. Thank you.
Kevin?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. Kevin O'Sullivan from Councillor Aaron Murphy's office. Councillor Murphy, I believe, previously sent a letter of support. And again today, Councillor Murphy would like to be recorded as in support of this project, as Attorney Castello said. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Do you need a hearing guest?
Hi, my name is Jonathan Martinez, and Martin Martinez here. And we're in favor for the McCollum Highway project. We've been resident, we've been East Boston residents for roughly 30 years now and, yeah, we think it'd be a great opportunity for small business owners for us. It'd be great.
Thank you.
Sal?
Hello?
Hi, you can state your name and put it all right.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Sal Lamatina. I am a lifelong resident of East Boston. I have lived on the Madonna Hill for over 30 years. This, these two billboards at that location have been driving me crazy for 30 years. I support the applicant because I know that if there's an issue on that hill, I could call him up and he will take care of. People have been dumping on that hill for many, many years and it's really frustrating. So I want to go on record in support. I've been going through these board appeals here for many, many years and I haven't done something here in the last seven years, but I've been up here to support this billboard because I know that a lot of my neighbors also want to see those two vacant billboards down and the hill maintained. So please, on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Joseph Carino. I'm a lifelong resident of Orient Heights. I lived on 43 C D W for over 55 years. I believe, I believe the community benefits that the neighborhood we receive will be great for the community. Taking down these two rusted eyesore billboards and replacing with a state-of-the-art sign would be better for the community. Also, the cleaning and landscaping of the upper-level property alone is well, is well worth it. As a resident and also as Assistant Business Manager of Painters and Allied Trades Union, Boston, I strongly support this proposal. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Call number ended in 2474. Just sent to request to unmute you.
Yes, hi, this is Gail Miller. I'd like to address a few points that were made here.
Can you state your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Gail Miller, I live at 232 Orient Ave. I've lived there since 1981.
Thank you.
I'm a strong proponent of the environment and I would like to start off by saying this is a conservation sub-district of which billboards really are not allowed and they're not allowed with regard to, well, all the things that were cited in the hearing, issues, the regulations, they are not allowed. I really have no problem with replacing the billboards that are stagnant now with other stagnant billboards. They've been neglected for years and years. The nursing home, the Donna Reonin Order, has recently sold their nursing home for above $10 million. So right now, I think they're pretty flush, if I might say so. And that space does provide wildlife habitat, which is very rare in East Boston except for the Belle Isle Marsh, which is quite a distance away. We do not have a rat problem from that area. Currently, it is not facilitated as a park. As a matter of fact, there are mounds of dirt there now and this park-like area has been neglected, but it would be a nice park at the top of the hill. And as I said, the Conservation Subdistrict does not, does not really embrace digital billboards. And years ago, we had the Federal Highway Beautification Act and we were discouraging billboards on the highway. And this meets that prerequisite of.
Please, please wrap up now.
All right, I have no problem. I would like to say that most recently, about a large city block away, we have had another billboard go up that was digital. And to that extent, I see no reason. I get, I get the community's support, but regulations should be regulations and there's no, there's been no impact on Conservation Subdistrict zoning. It still stands and I stand in opposition. And one more thing, it was not a landslide vote. It was almost a tie vote, 7 to 6, with two abstaining. It was a very low attendance that night. So I'd like to put that out.
Madam Chair, can I address one of her comments?
Let me, let's run through.
Okay, go ahead, Madam Chair.
Raise hands and then we will give you an opportunity to circle back. Are there any other raised hands, Stephanie?
I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Castello.
And I also have a question, a question after Mr. Castello speaks.
No, you can ask the question now if you like.
The two static billboards that you're removing, can you give me the dimensions of them?
I, I think they're 20 by 30, 20 by 30, I believe.
Both of them are 20 by 30 feet?
Correct.
Okay, so just wanted to let the board know that this new billboard is 14 and a half feet?
By 48, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Or smaller, okay.
No, with larger.
Oh, larger. The size could be slightly larger, slightly larger.
Okay, Mr. Castello?
Yeah, I just want to address the Conservation Protected District. I submitted an August letter basically stating that it's not a prohibition on development, but merely advisory how to proceed with the development just as long as, you know, there's no federal wetlands on this parcel, you know, it's no endangered species. You just have to be in harmony with the environment. And, you know, Ms. Gill, Gail Miller, we all respect her. She's like a tiger up in the hill. I just think she's wrong on this one. I just think there's an abundance of community support. And I think the last time, the Conservation Protection Subdistrict wasn't addressed by the previous attorney and I think that kind of carried the day against us. It's, it's not a prohibition on it. It's just not a prohibition, just as long as you're in harmony. And you're on Route 1A, it's a commercial district. It's a commercial district. And I think, you know, the billboard would, would be okay there. I really do. And I think an abundance of neighbors do also. And that's all I wanted to address, Madam Chair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are we ready for a motion?
Madam Chair, one last question.
As I do.
Okay. I thank Ms. Better Braza for asking about the size of the signs. I also had the same questions. And it does appear this is sort of a larger format billboard. But what also concerns me is the setback. It's three feet from the property line. Can you explain why it needs to be that close? And I don't see any other billboards in the area on this stretch that appear to be that close to the property lines.
I, I think it's because of the configuration of the mountain. We have to be a little closer to the street only because, we can only set back so far because we'd be touching the mountain. We could set it back further. If, if there's any recommendations this board requires us, we could do that. Yeah, if we could do it from an engineering standpoint, please let us know. It doesn't matter. If you want us to put it back 10 feet, 12 feet, let us know and we'll figure out a way from our engineers to do it for you.
Thank you. Ms. Stenbridge?
Yes, Madam Chair. Right now, are there any enforceable sign agreements between the order and Maverick Media?
I didn't, I didn't completely hear that. Any?
You asked if there were any enforceable agreements. Do you have a written, you know, contract, emoney or something with?
Oh, with, yes, we have a lease and we have a landscaping contract. Yeah, we have, everything's legal, everything's in writing. If you need, you need us to submit that to you, we will as well.
And for how long will be the lease and the maintenance agreement?
30 years, as long as the lease for the billboard, it's 30 years. And that means the flip for East Boston for the local businesses is for 30 years as well. And we maintain everything for 30 years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Would you consider an eco-friendly billboard with photovoltaics something that would actually reduce the environmental impact?
Yeah, we, listen, we're, we're open to any considerations. So if you.
I do, I do have to disagree with you that billboards don't impact natural life. It does actually, the light actually changes, migratory patterns. There are major effects to wildlife, so I would disagree with you on that portion.
Can I address that and I'll address it and Jeff tried to get into it and I wasn't going to say it unless they have to. Gail Miller had a problem with the previous billboard because they didn't provide light-blocking technology, which they should have. They should have done that. What we're going to do, and we're going to do it anyways, even though it wasn't brought up or not being forced to it, is we're going to do a thing that's called light-blocking technology where the technology today, it will, it will just, the light, they're directed just towards the streets, just towards the highway. So it's not going to affect anything else. The way they do this, they, they have, you know, levers and each, and there's like 100 levers and it just focuses directly on the highway. And peripheral, you're not, you're not able to see it. You can't see the light. So it's just, just on the highway. And we're going to do that, it's not required. We're going to do it at our own cost just because we're trying to do the right thing.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the project uses light-blocking technology and explores sustainable measures for lighting the billboard, such as sort of solar panels. I, I said to explore, so, but, but it is a proviso that you do use the light-blocking technology. And the reason why I'm putting forward this motion is because the removal of the two 30-feet-wide static panels, I think, pretty much replaces one billboard with a slighter dimension, but ultimately would have a positive impact if, if it's going to provide a revenue source to allow for a nonprofit to exist and for it to also advertise to the community that it's serving. Thanks.
And could we, well, could we add, just to have it on the record, that the recommended, that the approval include the removal of the two existing billboards?
Exactly, thank you so much for that. And the proviso also should remove the two static billboards that have been noted on.
And, and a landscaping and maintenance plan, maybe that's in harmony with the environment?
That'd be good. Is that a second or?
And, and we can provide as well as the applicant to provide a site planning that provides landscaping improvements on a property.
Yes.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
I'm going to vote no. I think this is too close to the property line and I'd like to stay consistent with the zoning and the planning recommendation. And I also think it's getting significantly larger than the existing billboards.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Now, let me know if you want me to repeat the provisos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, board members.
Thank you.
And we won't disappoint. This will be something you guys will be proud of when it's done. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1640825 with the address of 261 Bunker Hill Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Attorney Tim Schofield with a business address of 20 Bark Plaza, Suite 222, Boston. I represent Aaron Zawitzki and Dr. Denise McClure, who are the owners of 261 Bunker Hill Street 4 in Charlestown. My clients are seeking to repair and restore an existing headhouse and restore and expand an existing roof deck at their property. My clients have owned and resided at the property since 2021. They are raising two young children at the property. They want to stay in the city, they hope to stay in the city. This is their only outdoor space, so it's really important to them and their family. Their roof deck and headhouse have been in existence for many years, but they are in dire need of restoration. They're very dilapidated at this point and they're deteriorating rapidly and their concern is that it's soon going to represent a safety hazard. The proposed design will address these issues. It'll repair the headhouse, repair the deck. There is some expanded deck and it's, there's additional privacy, so they're building basically a wall around the deck, which will provide mitigation for any visual or sound impacts. There is pretty minimal of that here. It's on Bunker Hill Street. It's a, it's a pretty busy street where they're located and from where they are, there are multiple roof decks abutting and in nearby properties. We had, the butters meeting, only a few folks showed up and, and, and nobody was opposed. One person who lives in the building, the same building, it's a four-unit condo, spoke in support. It's fairly straightforward. There's really, it really is a situation of trying to, it's, it's, there's some photos, I think on maybe page 12 or so. If you keep scrolling, you can see the current condition is, is pretty bad. And so they're looking to repair their, there you go. You can, you can, I think if you scroll to the next page, you'll see the headhouse in particular is, is, oh, maybe that's too far. Let me just back up, I'm sorry. One more up, right there. Yeah, you can really see the, the headhouse here and that's the current deck. You can see it's, it's, there's starting to be, uh, water issues, uh, as well as just, is safety issues with, with the headhouse. Uh, so we're seeking relief, uh, for purposes of repairing and restoring the headhouse and the roof deck. And I'm welcome to take any questions.
Can you clarify the, uh, size of the existing roof deck and, and the size of the proposed roof deck?
I tell you the square footage right in front of me. I believe it's, it's currently about 200 square feet and it will be approximately 1,000 square feet. Um, but as you can see from the photos, it's, it's really, the existing deck is quite tiny and doesn't take up much of the roof, so it will be in expansion for sure. But, you know, there's not much real impact. It's going to come around. It will now come around the headhouse. In this top-left picture, you can see it sort of currently abuts the headhouse. Uh, it will now come around to this side, so you can walk around the headhouse and have more space. And I think one of the photos, um, you can see, and maybe it's the next page up or the next page down, it is quite a tiny area at the moment. Um, scroll up, please, I think it's, it might be, yeah, there, on the left, the bottom left. You can see it's quite a tiny deck at the moment. Uh, so the plan is to just make it more functional. Um, it won't have any visual impact the way it's situated. It isn't seen from, from the street. Um, and this is on a, this is a corner lot, so it's on the corner of Bunker Hill and I forget the side street, but there's, there's really no, actually on one, on two of the three sides, there's really no direct abutment because you have streets. And then on the, the, the right-hand side, as you look at this bottom-left picture, there's, uh, there's a building to the right that has, uh, its own roof deck.
Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ziggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on October 2nd, at which an abutter raised concerns about the deck being visible from the street. No other concerns were raised. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, can, can you just clarify the question about, uh, visibility from the street? How setback are, are you?
Yes, um, it's, from the front of the building, again, the side of the building, it, it, um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have a good visual here, unfortunately. Um, the way this building is structured, it sort of has, uh, it has a brick, uh, front and side that sits, so the, the roof sits below that. The deck basically is hidden behind this brick artifice. And in the front of the building, the deck sits back about three feet and on the two sides, it goes closer. It's about a foot back from each one. But again, there's a combination of two things. One, there's already the brick facade that goes around the deck and then the deck itself will have a wood, a wooden wall, for lack of a better word. Some of which will be glass in the front, just to let light into the deck.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
My turn question, sorry.
Yes.
Um, why can't they maintain the recommended five feet from the edge?
Uh, I mean, they could. It, it's a question of, it's not a very big space to begin with. So if you take five feet off of both sides, it, it just cuts into the sides of the deck. They could do that. We're, we're asking to let them take advantage of the space. Again, particularly given that the sides, on the two sides, there's really no impact. On one side is a side street, so there's just nobody there. It goes across the street to another building, which has its own roof decks. And then as you're sort of facing Bunker Hill Street, looking to the road, the right-hand side, again, it's a deck similar to this one, which has, uh, roof decks and, and air conditioning equipment and such. So they, 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 they could make it smaller. Um, I'm not going to say they can't, but obviously the goal here is to have as much space for two young kids and two adults as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Okay, Madam, Madam Chair, I make, I make the motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Uh, no, I think the, the deck should be pushed back to the rear out of sight of the public way.
Ms. We will?
No, and for the same reasons as Ms. Better Barza.
Ms. Panato?
Uh, I'm going to say no.
The chair votes yes, but the motion does not carry. Is there?
Sorry.
I'm sorry?
I, I don't know if it's too late with the vote, I'm wondering if we can request a proviso then if, if you ask us, if you give a proviso of reducing the size of the deck. Um, I'd rather not, you know, again, if that's, if that's the only factor, I'm sure, I'm quite sure we can work with that.
Thank you. Is there another motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion of approval with a proviso that the applicant works with B P D to reduce the size of the roof deck and to make best efforts to allocate the roof deck to the rear and to include elevations in the drawings.
Is there a second?
I'll second and add a proviso if Ms. Better Barza's amenable to it, that there's limited visibility from public ways.
Yes, that's, that's why I said to make best efforts to the rear, but the, that would be the outcome for that. So yes, let's add that. Thank you, Katie.
Okay.
Would you, well, sorry, this is Aaron Switzky, their, uh, applicant. We're committed to not having it visible from Bunker Hill Street. Um, i- is that really the concern here? Because we can, there are multiple ways-
No, I already put a pro, I already put a proviso forward. Typically, I don't think the applicant can speak when there's a proviso. The proviso is to, is to approve the pro, to approve the project with, uh, B P D review, to work with B P D on the size of the deck and to, um, have the deck mostly to the rear of the property so that it's not visible to the public way.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barza?
Yes.
Ms. We will?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1619123 with the address of 60th to 70 Cross Street. If the applicant and/or their representative or president, would they please explain the case to the board?
Uh, demanding attorney William Pearl on behalf of the applicant, Frank De Pasquale, De Pasquale Ventures. Uh, also on the, uh, the show is, uh, the architect, Anthony Pozzani. Um, and we will be going through a proposal, uh, before you, which is, um, to combine, uh, three buildings, two of which are one-story and, uh, the second one is a four-story building. Uh, looking at that photograph that's on the screen, uh, the first building has a Hanover Street address to the right and, uh, the next building is the Cross Street building in the middle and the last building, uh, is behind the billboard, uh, on Salem Street, which is the four-story building. Uh, the, uh, Cross Street storefronts that you see are all vacant. They've been vacant for some time. Uh, they've had multiple uses in the past as a grocery store, liquor store, uh, restaurants, cafe and various retail shops. Mr. De Pasquale acquired the property this past year and started a community process, uh, that resulted in a number of meetings and some design changes. Uh, we are proposing, uh, a partial second-story addition to the one-story that you see on, uh, the Hanover to Salem, uh, face and cross, noting that this is, uh, the entryway to the North End uh, from the Rose Kennedy Greenway. It's a very significant parcel, uh, both in the community and in the city, in this neighborhood. Uh, this proposal, uh, that we will be presenting to you today, uh, will be a combination of uses. Uh, if we, uh, can look at, uh, page 12, uh, of the plans, I'll, I'll walk through the uses and, uh, give you some idea of what, what we have in mind. And I don't think that's the page, I'm sorry. Um, it's page eight, I'm, if we can, go to page eight. I gave you the wrong page. This, this, this shows you, uh, the basement and the, the first floor. So starting with that, the basement is primarily storage and some prep area for some rather interested uses. This, uh, this, uh, first-floor level will contain, uh, a culinary school, uh, which you see on the Salem Street side or what is the top left. Uh, this has been, uh, a concept that, that Mr. De Pasquale has had for years. Uh, we are, he, in conjunction with, uh, a culinary school that exists in Italy today, uh, would conduct, uh, classes, uh, both for local and Italian, uh, individuals who want to, uh, plan a future in the culinary institute, uh, careers, uh, as well as having evening, uh, culinary classes for the general public and a program in conjunction with the local, uh, grammar schools, uh, where local, uh, students can also have the benefit of learning, uh, the culinary arts, both in terms of cooking, uh, and the, uh, the nature of, of foods, uh, in particular, in this instance, uh, the Italian culture, uh, which guides also most of the rest of the first floor. The, the rest of the first floor are retail spaces, uh, which will have a focus on, uh, both local and Italian products, uh, uh, from clothing, uh, through, uh, furniture, things of that sort that have, uh, Italian design. Uh, one other item on the first floor is a cafe, uh, which is, uh, at the, uh, what would be the second space in from the left. That's a small area. Uh, we are presently, uh, looking into the use of, uh, the front area, which is extremely wide, uh, both sidewalk and Freedom Trail, uh, leading into the North End. So we've started some discussions about potentially having outdoor cafe service. That's not part of the existing plan, but I pointed out as far as the uses. And, uh, that cafe is connected to the second floor, which should be, um, hopefully in page, uh, I'm sorry, I think that's going to be, uh, here we go. That second floor, now, uh, at the top of the page, uh, is, is showing you a couple of things. Uh, the blue area is the addition portion of this plan. Uh, the height of, uh, the first floor, uh, is 15 feet. Uh, the height of this, uh, addition is 12 feet, uh, creating a total height of 27 feet. It's planned as a cafe/restaurant. The, uh, tan areas on either side, uh, are open and look out over the Greenway. Uh, the center section has a glass frontage, uh, also looking out at the Greenway. So it'll be, uh, restaurant/cafe service for lunch and dinner. Um, and, uh, that is, uh, the total of the uses within the building itself. The, uh, various meetings led to this, uh, particular design. Um, we had additional space prior to this, uh, that we've removed. Um, we have got to numerous meetings you have before you. A number of items, which would include, there's 150 letters from residents of North End supporting this. Uh, the two community groups, which are the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council and the North End Waterfront Residents Association, have also submitted letters that the, their groups have supported this as well. I believe you'll hear from other people who will testify in support. The, uh, relief, uh, requested in this is twofold. Uh, of course, is, uh, the conditional use relief, uh, primarily due to the fact that we're adding, uh, to an existing building. Uh, this district has a 55-foot height limit. However, we're only going up to a height of 27 feet and that's only in the center portion of this, uh, particular structure. Um, the second is, uh, a variance relief or setback. Uh, we meet all the requirements because of the nature of the, uh, as you can see from this, the shallowness, uh, of, of the building. It ranges from, uh, a, a smaller amount of 13 feet deep to 35 feet deep. Uh, so in order to be able to get the use that we intend, this is sort of a minimal, uh, amount of space and, uh, we were expecting that, uh, that we could use the center portion as, as designed for the restaurant purpose. Uh, those are, uh, the two areas of relief that are being sought today and we would hope that you would find sufficient, uh, information provided to you and Architect Pozzani can explain any of the items in the drawings that I'm not able to.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Uh, yes. Um, the adjacent building on the surveyor that, it says Lot A, that's about 1,130 square feet. Uh, the existing photo shows one window, but on your elevation, it shows three windows. Can you just please clarify? So it's, um, I was looking to see, oh, I'm sorry, that's incorrect. I think they're kind of chillers or something. I misread that for windows.
Yeah, yes.
If you can, if you can clarify, like, if we look at that elevation, um, of your proposal and we can see the building's party wall, uh, in its background, um, can you just clarify where that existing window location would be? And if it's not, and is it by accident, you didn't render it?
Uh, Anthony, Anthony Pozzani, uh, architect, uh, can, if you go down-
Can you go the elevations, um, if-
Yeah, we, we have elevations. Down, go down some more.
Right here, yeah, right here.
This, this is, uh, the proposed elevation that shows the two-story addition in the center. On either side, uh, porthos, uh, and you can see the mechanical equipment. What we've done is when we've met with the neighbors, that was a major concern. So we've tried to remote the mechanical equipment required for the restaurant, et cetera, adjacent to 204, uh, the brick wall at 204 Hanover Street. And there's a 3D view. If you could go down-
Right, if you stay here, just for a second, give me a, so, on your, on the existing photos, there appears to be one existing window on the brick facade of the adjacent building.
That is correct.
So was it just not rendered here?
No, uh, it was, uh, not rendered here and the question about that window is, it, it appeared, okay? Um, we would, it would be desirable, in fact, to close it off.
But that, but that's not on your property.
That is correct.
So you can't really close, well, it depends what the use is of the adjacent building.
Yeah, well, the, the issue is that, uh, how desirable is it to have that window, which probably should not have been there, uh, below mechanical equipment? Or have mechanical equipment below there.
Right. Do you know what, um, do you know what use is in that adjacent building?
Yes, there, that building has a, it's going to have a bar/restaurant on the first floor and the next two floors are two units per floor.
Right, apartment units.
Yeah.
But the, the owner does not own that building.
Mr. De Pasquale does not own that building, that's-
Does not, okay. Thanks, that would clarify a lot why the B P D recommendation was to provide, um, some form of buffer or setback. Um, so just wanted to bring that to my colleagues' attention. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hampton, would you like to, um, wave to clarify your recommendation?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. Uh, as you can see, we recommend a denial without prejudice as Ms. Better Barza brought up a good point about, uh, light and air for the adjacent building. Also, one of our main concerns for this, uh, recommendation was that we did not receive any plans that had anything to do with, uh, the roof deck and height and access. Uh, we just today received a new rejection letter from I S D dated today, um, removing that as a violation. So, uh, the recommendation that you have in front of you today is based on plans that, uh, were reviewed in a rejection letter dated June 20th. Not sure whether or not, um, anything would have changed in our recommendation, uh, but I just want to point it out for the record that one of our major concerns, uh, for our recommendation, uh, was removed in a updated refusal letter from I S D dated today. Thank you.
But Jeff, you did receive these drawings, correct?
Uh,
They're in front of us because I received them today.
Yeah, I mean, but based on what I S D had, uh, given us for a rejection letter, we had more violations that were a concern of ours that we put in our recommendation. So, not sure if that would have changed anything, Ms. Better Barza, but I just wanted to point it out that, you know, one of the major concerns that we had is now no longer- one of the major concerns that we had is now no longer a violation.
Right, right. And so one of the questions I have for the architect is, your proposal could still work within that existing window. I mean, I don't see any structure. It's more of like really negotiating where the mechanical units are gonna go, but you still, your massing does clear that window. And you are building within the existing footprint anyway.
That is correct. If we could go down two more slides, you'll see a 3D view. Right, okay, okay. So that's the proposed 3D view. Yes, that window could stay there.
Other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson at the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutment meeting on July 24th, at which concerns were raised regarding the effects of the proposal on the abutting building, such as possible impacts on an existing fire egress, as well as lack of natural light relating to the proposed rear setback on the Hanover Street side. One abuter raised concerns relating to the fit of the design with the context of the surrounding area. Various members of the broader community spoke positively of the plan to revitalize a currently underutilized parcel. The proposal was presented to NURA and NUNIC, the active civic groups in this area, who are both supportive. Our office has received one letter of opposition that has been forwarded to the board. And with that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Minor?
Thank you, Madame Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Minor Porres, representing the Carpentry Union. We'd like to go on record in strong support of this project. And it's very nice to see you, Mr. Pizzani. You doing well?
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Patrick, and I'm the representative of State Representative Aaron Mikowitz. We'd like to be on record in strong support of this project. You know, this parcel of land has long been lighted for over a decade now. And can't think of any better proponent to make sure that gateway to the North End is beautiful and all represented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Benjamin? I sent a request to all media.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Benjamin Timman from Timman Davis &amp; Duffy, business address of 45 Bromfield Street. I represent Patricia Craig, who is the owner of two of the units that have come up in discussion so far. 57 Salem Street Rear units 3R and 4R, which are condominium units. I wonder if the rendering that was just last up, I believe it was PDF page 15, could be put back up, if that's possible? Thank you.
Please, 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 thank you.
Thank you. So my client, Ms. Craig, owns the two units that are in the building being blocked by the, by the air conditioning unit there. She submitted comments to the city back in August. And I submitted a letter on her behalf yesterday. Just been recently retained, but for reasons that are, I think, pretty clear from the renderings and that maybe have been echoed to some degree by Mr. Hampton and his department. My client opposes this current design. She has owned these units, one of the units since 1981, and the other since approximately 1999. They are occupied with tenants. These are condominium units that are part of a larger condominium association in that building. So the rear setback is definitely a concern. The loss of air and light and view are a concern. Presently, and I was at the property yesterday with Ms. Craig, the units have beautiful views of the Rose Kennedy Greenway. But as shown here, those views will be obstructed, at least on the third floor, if not the fourth, but it's unclear, based on the renderings that we also just received today, what the impact on the fourth floor view would be. So as the applicant just said, that there'll be, you know, quite lovely views for diners on the proposed rooftop here, if this is permitted, but that's at the expense of my client and the value of her properties and the quiet enjoyment of her tenants in those, in those units. The fire egress was also mentioned, and I wonder if we might be able to go to two slides?
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Sure. Page 17, very quickly, if possible. So the lower right-hand rendering here. My client, again, we just saw this within the last 12 hours or so, but my client points out that this does not depict the actual situation on the ground. And there is an easement in place that guarantees fire egress for her units. You know, simply put, and I'll wrap up, more time is needed for us to understand what this proposal would mean for the ability of the occupants of these buildings, which this building did have a terrible fire in the 2000s, to be able to access the fire escapes and escape in the case of a fire. So we're opposed to this, or at least would support a deferral so that many of these matters can be further discussed. Thank you.
Mike?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Conway, business address 50 Salem Street, Winfield, Massachusetts. I represent the 57 to 59 Salem Street Condominium Trust. Many of the residents living in this same building or have tenants in the same building that Council for Attorney Craig just mentioned. I echo all of his concerns. I would also like to bring to the board's attention our concerns with regard to the outdoor veranda seating. We have major concerns related to hours of operation and noise. As it stands now, the hours of operation are gonna be, I believe, until 1:00 AM. So this is gonna cause serious issues, especially during the summer months, for the residents of these buildings. And in conjunction with the comments made by attorney, the attorney for Ms. Craig, we also are not in support of this and at the very least would look for a permit so we can further investigate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
It looks like Anthony Pizzani has his hand raised.
Well, he's the part of the applicant team. Are there any other?
No additional raised hands other than that.
Okay, now we'll turn it back to the applicant with any quick response.
If I could start. Several items. It's not accurate that the abutters are saying they haven't seen these plans. We were on-site on at least two occasions. We've met three times with condominium group, including the trustees and some of the individuals who are testifying. We had originally designed this building with three floors. We eliminated the second floor, which occupied the entire forefront of the building and lowered the building by an entire floor in response to some of the issues that were raised with regard to egress. What also isn't accurate is what you see on the plan is an alternate egress that is 1,000% better than the existing egress plan. That egress plan that exists today requires going across an unprotected roof and down a very dangerous ladder into a closed yard. We've provided an alternate plan, and the easement that's in place speaks to that, says that if in fact we can design an alternate plan to the satisfaction of the city and the fire department, and that's the plan that we have before you that will be presented to the city and the fire department. The issue of hours of operation has little to do with this. The outdoor dining does not close at 1:00. It's only indoor dining that closes at 1:00. The outdoor dining closes at 11:00. So that also isn't accurate. We would point out to you that the issue in terms of light area, which is out of the 5418, speaks to the issue of whether there's a substantial effect on abutting properties in terms of light area and views. We've done shadow studies that were presented to the abutters as well, indicating that the east-west direction of the sun basically goes from Hanover to Salem Street, meaning it passes across the face of our building. And shadows cast by the taller buildings in the Haymarket Square area have more of an effect on their building than anything that we're building ourselves. There is some, but as I say, 5418 is a conditional use. It's not a co-vision, the building and the city, and allows the building so long as there isn't substantial interference. And I submit to you that the efforts that were made indicate that these are not substantial interference with our abutters.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board? Mr. Pizzani, would you?
Yes.
If you wanted to add something quickly?
I do. I want to particularly address the issue of the fire egress for the building on Salem Street. If you could go back to, it would be drawing number six, which would actually be nine, I think, in your... Go down. Okay, go down next one. Okay, right there. No, go back, back up. Back up. Okay, right here. This is, no, okay, good, okay, the bottom drawing, no, okay.
It's number nine.
No, okay, this one, right, right here, okay. This is the actual egress now for the Salem Street building. And the way it works is that you come down the fire escape and you walk across a wood roof, basically. And at the end on the right, there's a vertical ladder that takes you down 15 feet to the ground. If you go, now go up one to our plan, up two. No, excuse me, down, down to, down, down. Our colored plans. Go to the colored plans. Go down, next one down. Okay, right there, stop. Okay, you can see what we've done is we have taken a hard look at that fire escape. We have turned the rung, so it runs now to the left rather than to the right. We've set our building back five feet. So you would now egress across, and you reach a point where you have two directional changes. You can either go up, or you can continue straight. You continue straight, and you wrap around our building. And now you come onto a large area of refuge, which is our terrace. Also, all the doors are fire, have fire egress hardware. You could also enter directly into our building, go down the stair, and come out on Cross, come out on Cross Street. We, obviously, this has to be verified with the fire department, but we have taken very conscious, made a very conscious effort to understand and address and improve the fire egress out of the Salem Street building. We have, again, set our building back direct from their building.
Are there, are there further questions from the board? Okay, are we ready for motion?
Yes, we're ready for motion.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with some provisals. One being that the project be reviewed with BPD to work on the exterior to complement some of the kind of historic potential detailing on the exterior to complement the more modern glass aesthetics, which I think is commendable. The second one is that the applicant worked with BPD on just kind of the review of the, of the rear kind of condition where it abuts the existing property to just ensure that there is kind of adequate light and air. And I think that would be, that would be it in terms of the provisals. I think it's a workable project, and it's a commendable project in regards to bringing back some activity and life in the area.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberich?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bedder Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck. Thank you very much.
We'll jump ahead and ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11 o'clock here?
I have, I have a raised hand. Omar, I'd like to unmute you to speak.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, are you seeking a deferral?
I am seeking a deferral. I live in the property directly behind this location.
I'm sorry, are you the applicant?
No, I'm not.
Okay, then you cannot seek a deferral. Any other, any applicants seeking a deferral for the 11:00 a.m.s?
No, raise hands.
Okay, Mr. Stemberich.
With that, we will return to the 9:30 hearings to case BOA 163, 3160, with the address of 125 B Street. If the applicant stands or if they are representative present, would you please explain the case to the board?
Good morning, my name is Robin Latour. I'm representing Dish Wireless in regards to a new telecommunications antenna installation. I received a call from the mayor's office this morning stating the ISD had seemed to miss the height violation. Through my research, I do not see that we're above the 20 feet that is allowed. But in regards to having the ISD re-review the plans, I would like to request a deferral.
Okay, how much time do you need?
Just enough time for the ISD to re-review the plans and see if there's an additional height violation.
Caroline?
We can do December 3rd, December 10th, or January 14th?
December 3rd.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer till December 3rd.
May I have a second?
Sure.
Mr. Stemberich?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bedder Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
I see another raised hand. If you're honest and honest, you have the ability to unmute yourself.
Is Ocon seeking an applicant?
Yes.
Are you seeking a deferral for an 11 o'clock?
No, I'm not seeking a deferral, but I just wanted to be sure that I have not been missed, because the state got one.
You have not been missed. We are still on the 9:30 a.m., so we will proceed.
Thank you, that's all.
Next, we have case BOA 163, 6406, with the address of 617 Dorchester Avenue. If the applicant stands or if they are representative present, would you please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stemberich. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranty. I'm an attorney with a business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Mark Little, the property owner and developer, who is here today, as is Eric Zacherson, the context workshop, the project architect. This is an application for a new four-story, 13-unit residential building with no accessory off-street parking at 617 Dorchester Avenue in South Boston's Andrews Square neighborhood, the site of the... The site is located in approximately five-minute walk to the MBTA's Andrew Station on the Red Line and approximately 13-minute walk to the New Market commuter rail stop. The surrounding neighborhood features a mix of residential and commercial uses with the site being within a B1 general business zoning district under the 1964 base code. This area has been undergoing a residential transformation in recent years and in terms of planning context is located within the area of the BPDA-approved Plan South Boston Dorchester Avenue. I will speak to the zoning relief being requested and then turn the presentation over to Eric Zacherson to briefly walk the board through the building plans. As I say, the site is with, within a B1 zoning district under the base code, it is a block-through vacant lot extending from Dorchester Avenue to Boston Street. The reason the zoning for this area has not been updated into Article 68, the South Boston Neighborhood article, is, as I mentioned, the fact that it is within the area of Plan South Boston Dorchester Avenue, which has been approved by the BPDA, now the planning board have not yet enacted into zoning. The proposal is entirely consistent with the plan's guidelines. Proposed multifamily use is allowed by zoning, but the application was cited for certain dimensional violations in addition to a violation for not providing off-street parking. There is a violation arising from insufficient lot size for 13 proposed units. The current code requirement is 5,000 square feet of lot area for the first unit and 1,000 square feet for each additional unit, the lot size here is just over 6,100 square feet. There is a violation for insufficient usable open space, the code requires 400 square feet per dwelling unit, here there's approximately 174 square feet per dwelling unit, or a total of 2,256 square feet of open space. There is also a green roof feature that has been added to the rooftop since the previous time that this proposal was before the board. The maximum FAR here under zoning is one, while the proposed FAR is approximately 2.74. The maximum building height under the code is three stories and 40 feet, this building would be four stories and approximately 41 feet tall, and that is primarily owing to the green roof feature. There is a cited front yard setback violation, but we are in conformance with existing modal alignment, and the building has two front yards and no rear yard, owing to the fact that it is a block-through lot. Finally, as the Planning Department's recommendation of approval notes, the site is located within the coastal flood resilience overlay district, Article 25A of the code. While this project is not subject to the requirements of Article 25A given its size, the building was designed, in fact, to comply with resiliency requirements since the project began as a larger Article 80 project and therefore underwent extensive BPDA and city of Boston resiliency analysis and design review over the course of many months. As a 13-unit project, there would be two IDP units here, which will be identified working with the mayor's office of housing and memorialized in an affordable housing agreement as this is a proposed condominium unit project. With that, Madam Chair, I'll turn the presentation over to Eric Zacherson to walk the board through the building plans.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. So, on this site plan, you see Dorchester Avenue on the right side of the drawing and Boston Street on the left side, as George mentioned, and the building does front on two streets as a, with the primary entrance being on Dorchester Avenue, so on the right side you see a small plaza that we've carved out of like parking area, entrance to a lobby, and then as, as George mentioned, the, the first floor with all the residential units is raised up, so you would enter down along the corridor in the center to a stair up to the first-floor units with a lift adjacent to that, and then that'll take you to the elevator lobby, which takes you to the unit above. This floor has three units on this level, they are raised above Dorchester Avenue because of that flood concern, even though, as he stated, we are not necessarily a flood target for 25A. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, this is just a little bit of context to show the proximity of the project to Andrew Square and some of the new construction projects that are going on around, as George mentioned, it has been increasingly more residential development in and around this area. Next slide, please. A few context images, on the left you see some, some of the existing photos with the new site, with the site locked in in red, as, as he mentioned, there are new trees and no building on the property as it stands today, and then on the lower left you see four images showing how we've worked with the, trying to work with the height amassing of the street in order to make sure that this building is able to sit within that. Next slide. Shadow studies that were prepared at the request of the neighbors to kind of highlight the fact that it, that there will be some shadows on neighboring rear yards, but the majority of our shadows do fall on those, the streets in the morning and evening. Next slide. And it would be a basement plan with storage lockers, and then on the next slide we'll get into a enlarged first floor plan with the three, the first three units, these are typically two-bed, two-bath units ranging in size from 789 square feet to 1,031, 34 square feet. Next slide. And then on the, this is the first kind of typical floor, you see how we have four units, two facing Boston and Street and two facing Dorchester Avenue, and then three of the four units have small decked kind of at the rear, what we consider the rear, but they are actually the middle of the site, those are adjacent to some of the sort of bedrooms. Next slide. Then a level above we can open up that gap a little bit more in order to reduce the the shadowing on the immediate neighbors and to provide even a little more open space. Again, two-bed, two-bath, two-bed, one-bath units ranging in size from 890 square feet to 1,019 square feet. Slide. The very top floor as our two largest units, and these two would have, are pulled back significantly, I think 14 feet on the right side and about 12 feet on the left side from the street face. We've gone intentionally to make the building feel more like some of its three-story neighbors, and then additionally, the walls that you see that will be facing those two streets are actually canted back in kind of a modern man's roof feel in order to further diminish their visibility from the level below. And then each of these has a, a walkout deck that would be private to, private to the unit and adjacent to the living room, and then we pulled these back from the edges with a little bit of plantings outward. Next slide. And then on the very top of the building would be an extensive green roof, this would be not for the residents' access, but really to reduce the urban heat island effect and minimize the impacts of, of this construction on the local environment. Next slide. And then again, a few more context images to show how the building fits St. Melon Street as a three-story, primarily three-story element with that fourth story recessed back. Next slide. And then there's some further elevations that, that show it, although I don't believe these show the decanting of the man's roof back, that might have been in the next iteration of these drawings which were shared with the neighborhood, I mean, to what we're here too. I believe that's it for me, and I'll leave, I'll turn over to questions.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services, this petitioner has completed the ONS community process, our office hosted in a Butters meeting on September 17th at which there were questions and a concern primarily relating to the front setback, there were no other concerns raised, and there were also comments made in support of the proposal. The Andrew Square Civic Association is the active civic group in this area and they are supportive of the proposal. In addition to their letter of support, we have received two other letters of support, and with that background, we defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul?
Paul?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Paul Dooley from Senator Collins' office, Senator Collins would like to go on record in support of the proposal, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Liam Remus from Counterfeiter Earl's office, our office would like to on record in support of the proposal, thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raise hands, Madam Chair.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with, to proviso, the first one for the proponent to continue with review from the Planning Department. The second one is for the proponent to enter into a housing agreement with the mayor's office of house, of housing for the two affordable housing units that they will be providing.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Barabrazza.
I'm going to vote no, just due to the density, it's almost three times the required density on the, on the property, and in addition, there's zero open space when the minimum requirement is 2,600, so for the fact of zero open space and almost three times the density, I'm voting no.
Okay, Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next case has been deferred. Following that, we have case BOA 1593227 with the address of 282 Walnut Avenue. If the applicant stands or they are representative present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Madam Chair, and you, is, I bought this property in August of 2020, and at that time, I noticed that the basement space, the basement had more space than this other unit above it, so I became curious why this arrangement would be so, because usually the idea we have of the basement space is a dingy place where you have to walk through, touch a flashlight, and you have to cross down to make sure you don't hit anything above your head, but none of this is true about this very basement space I'm going to talk to you about. So, on the contrary, there was a cluster of rooms that the previous owner used to run as a rooming house, but maybe a year or two prior to selling it, he pulled it out of a rooming houses, so there was no rooming houses, it wasn't being used as a rooming houses just before I bought it. And curiously enough, while I was scratching my head what to do with the space, right where the space measures 1,308, it is square feet, while the six other units above it, one of them is more than 1,100 square feet. So, while I was scratching my head what to do with it, I met a neighbor of mine who lives and owns 286 Walnut Avenue by the name of Mr. Vargas, who told me that he was a tenant in that basement back as 1985 or 89, and either currently works as a inspector for the city of Boston, I don't know if he's still working on that, that portfolio, or whether he has found and started his own business. So, he told me that would help me out when the time for legalizing it comes. So, the space again had two bathrooms, while the other unit had one bathroom each, and at the front lobby where you have to intercom, ring the tenants, and get boss in, this basement space had its own intercom arrangement in the lobby. So, that gave me the impression that at some time, somebody thought of using this as a living space and that there was some sort of permission for this toilet arrangement and all these intercoms to be installed. So, that's why I'm here to see if I can get the relief from the bottom of appeal to not to allow this huge space to be wasted. And as for the violations, the usable open space violation, there would be only a single tenant in this basement, and that is myself, so not many people, these people are thinking that a family of five or two and so on would be doing for this space, that is not going to happen, because it would be just myself, the owner, and as for the parking space, I don't drive as of now, so there
So, these are, so these are pre-existing violations, is that correct? You're not, you're not adding any additional footprint or any such thing, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, what's the floor-to-ceiling height of the
The floor-to-ceiling height currently is seven feet, but the contractor told me that he has yet to do shoving of the floor, so when he shoves that floor, the ceiling-to-ceiling height space is going to grow more than the seven feet that it is currently. Also, I want to bring to your attention that the ISD and myself as they knew the plan, and the only question they had was the exit from the bedroom, which the original plan drew so that the exit from the bedroom opened onto the hallway, that is outside the unit, so, but the architect has corrected that, so the current plan shows the exit is from the bedroom into the unit itself now. So, that was the only observation the ISD had about the plan.
Thank you, are there questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Thank you, Madam Chairman of the Board and Board Members, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry, I am the Roxbury Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an Butters meeting held on June 3rd, very lightly attended with one supporter, they then went before Garrison Charter Neighborhood Association where they did present their proposal, now the support and opposition has been conveyed at this time. Thank you for your time, and the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services would like to refer to the board with adjutant.
Thank you.
I see no raise hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the proviso that no building code relief be granted.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Barabrazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
At this point, we will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11:30 a.m. hearing.
Cameron, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Cameron Merrill for 27 Dudley Street, case 1552298. This is a case where we had
There, there was, I'll read into the record, and we'll go from there. That is case BOA 1552298 with the address of 27 Dudley Street. Go ahead, Ms. Merrill.
Thank you very much, this was an application to modify the interior layout of a six-unit building to make it a seven-unit building. At the September hearing, it was learned that the planning staff had a few questions, a memorandum A memorandum was drafted and submitted, providing answers to those questions in early October. And we're informed that that memorandum remains under review of the Plans Desk, and we have been requested to make a request for deferral today, which we are now doing.
Okay, how much time do you need?
I think that is a question for the city. I'd like the soonest date possible.
Okay, Caroline.
We can do December 3rd.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer till December the 3rd.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Bedabrazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
There votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much.
If there are no further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11:30 timeframe, then we'll move on to the next two companion cases. Case BO versus case BOA 1623617 with the address of 13 Bird Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1623610 with the address of 5 Wheelock Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain the case in full?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Charlie Tevman. I'm an attorney at 15 Broad Street, Boston, and I am appearing on behalf of the applicant, Sean George, who resides at the property at 5 Wheelock Avenue, Dorchester. The existing property at 5 Wheelock Avenue is a single-family residence, which is well-kept and will remain as is. The proposal is to subdivide the existing lot at 5 Wheelock Avenue, which is a current lot size of 3,362 square feet, to subdivide that house lot so that its size will be reduced to 2,281 square feet and to combine the subdivided lot with a smaller lot next door, or behind it rather, at 13 Bird Street in order to construct a new three-family residence at 13 Bird Street. The project will be a total of three units. Each unit will have three bedrooms and two baths. No off-street parking is proposed, given the proximity to public transit services, including numerous MBTA routes on nearby Hancock Street and Columbia Road and the proximity to the Upphams Corner Community Rail Station. The dimensional regulations applicable to 13 Bird Street require a 4,000, minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet. 2,571 square feet is proposed. Regarding the floor area ratio, 1.0 is required and a 1.81 FAR is proposed. Regarding the building height, at three stories and 35 feet, it is compliant. The side yard requirement is 10 feet and 7.2 feet is proposed. The rear yard setback is 30 feet and 5 feet is proposed. The open space requirement is 1,200 square feet. 615 square feet is proposed. The proponent, Sean George, has completed the neighborhood process and the abutter process with strong support and no opposition, which we are aware. We have submitted letters of support from three immediate abutters, at least one of whom I understand is attending this hearing for the purpose of, for the purpose of speaking in favor of the proposed project. We also have submitted a letter of support from Dorchester Growing Together, a neighborhood civic organization which advocates for building abundant housing throughout Dorchester to alleviate the housing crisis and preserve Dorchester's welcoming, diverse community. Dorchester Growing Together voiced its strong support for this project. Looking at the surrounding context, we feel that this project is appropriate given where the neighborhood is surrounded by three-family residences, multifamily apartment residences are on all sides of the property, on Bird Street, Columbia Road, Wheelock Avenue, and on Hancock Street. Finally, I understand the planning department has recommended approval of this project with design review and that the planning department further concluded the requested zoning relief for this project is appropriate as it would allow for fair use of the land. The proponent, Sean George, is available on this hearing to answer any community process or design-related questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Mid-Dorchester Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on September 24th, very lightly attended with no voiced opposition, but a few inquiries were made and addressed regarding affordability, occupancy, and whether they were for sale or rent, and possibly leased. They then presented to the Hancock Street Civic Association, where they were approved to move forward. Our office has also received four letters of support. Thank you for your time. When the mayor's office of neighborhood services would like to defer to the board for the judge next time.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam from Counter Fitzgerald's office would like to on record support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no raised hands, Madam Chair.
With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bedabrazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and thank you, Ms. Hayes.
The next case has been deferred, and that takes us to case BOA 1645854 with the address of 251 to 253 Wood Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain the case in full?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Mike Ross. I'm attorney at the law firm of Prince Lobel, One International Place in Boston. This is a proposal where the petitioner secured an additional lot at the rear of this existing non-conforming two-family, which creates an 8,580 square foot lot. The proposal, you could probably, Madam Ambassador, sit on that site plan you were just on for a second. Thank you very much. The proposal is to add two additional units and three additional parking spaces to this property. This was before your board, December 2023, almost a year ago, where it was denied without prejudice, primarily due to the fact that there was a desire to see reduced massing of the addition, increased open space, reduced parking, and reduced FAR, all of which has been complied with in this new submittal. The FAR has been reduced, the open space has been increased, the amount of new parking has been reduced. In addition, the property now enjoys community support from the East River Street Neighborhood Association, as well as the District City Councilor. On this survey slide, you'll see the combining of the two lots, that rear lot being the new lot on the left on the back of Ellard Street, to create this 8,580 square foot lot. You'll see the shifting of the curb cut further away from the corner down Ellard Street. It maintains the two existing tandem parking spaces on Wood Ave and creates three spaces reduced from the five spaces off Ellard Street after feedback, with room to maneuver as well, which is, which is new. There's an increased setback on the right side of the building that eliminates the variance that was triggered previously. And that was accomplished in part by moving the building, but also shrinking the addition slightly. And then that structure, the addition, is now a true 2.5-story structure. Previously, it exceeded slightly the half-story and therefore created a variance. Next slide, please. This slide just shows the zoning chart with the bubbles of how the zoning has changed. I'll go through the zoning in a second, Madam Chair. Slide 820 and 821, we can skip because they are existing conditions. And if you could land, Madam Ambassador, to slide 82.2. It's like three slides from where you are, I think. So slide 82.2. There you go, right there. So slide 82.2 on the top shows the new duplex unit, which creates a 1489 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath. And on the basement on this slide, it's just storage mechanical. And then on the next slide, floor plan, 82.3, at the bottom, and I'm sorry, it's a little bit confusing. So but on the bottom plan, that is the bottom of the duplex. You can go back, Madam. Please stay there. So the bottom plan is the bottom of the duplex. And the upper plan, that would be a floor-through unit. And really, you're looking at the back there on the darker portion. The front, that front portion that you're looking at, that's in a slightly lighter grayed out, that's the existing, that's what's there today, two units. So this upper top-left corner of the plan there, that's a floor-through unit, one of the new units, one of the two new units for 1,012 square feet. And it's a three-bedroom with one bath. Okay? And then if you'll go, Madam Ambassador, just skip the next two slides, which are existing condition elevations, and we'll go to the proposed elevation right there. Thank you, A3.2. So the proposed elevation on the right side of the front of the building, you'll see separate entrances and egresses off the new units on the side, as well as the rear of the building. Yeah, just on that upper portion, the darker section in the back is the addition. And next slide, please. On A3.3, on this slide, you'll see the left elevation and rear elevation. And you'll see, you'll note the new balcony, the ground floor entrance on the side there provides access and egress to the two existing new units, as well as to the, to the two new units, as well as to the two existing units that are there. And then just if you'll, then so the next five slides, Madam Chair, board members, I created them for, just so you can compare and contrast and have available. We can come back to that if you'd like, of what we proposed a year ago and what we're proposing today. And if the ambassador could just go five down to the photos here at the end of the slide. I wanted just to show you, this is the existing structure on the right there, Wood Ave, corner lot. Ellard Street is in the back, and that's what we're proposing as the addition. We'll scroll down to the next slide. I did want to show you kind of the before and after. The owner of the property, who used to live here, has been very active and hands-on. He's been replacing the fence. He replaced the foundation to the fence. He cleaned up the area. He hired a management company. He started to really engage as a result of this community process, has, you know, become far more attentive to his property. And he has left on a professional management company that will continue to oversee and overlook the property, and that will continue into the future. It's only four units, but it's now watched on a daily, regular basis, and it's really made a difference. I don't know if there's another photo there, Madam Ambassador. Yeah, just more of the same, kind of showing you how he cleaned up the site. Just on the zoning, Madam Chair, quickly. So non-conforming use, because when they added the additional lot, it's still increasing the structure of the existing structure, which is a non-conforming structure because it's a two-family in a 1F district. So that increase by more than 25% triggered the non-conforming use. The use itself, we're in a 1F sub-district, and that is four units within a one. The lot width of this lot has been, always has been, 4711 in a 60. Many of the lots in this district do not hit that 60 lot width minimum. The FAR here, I, we brought it down from a .69 to a .62. And .62 is very consistent with some other properties that are in this immediate area. This is, the zoning requires a .5 in this area, and that's why we recited. The open space, one of the things we were asked to do is to increase the open space. We increased it from 2,500 approximately to just over 3,000 total open space. The open space requires 1,800 per unit. So we have four units at 1,800. Two existing units may have been considered for open space purposes, pre-existing non-conforming. So there would be 3,600 would be the technical requirement, and we're at 3050. The side yard, like I mentioned earlier, we moved, it used to be 7 feet 4 inches to the neighbor. It's now 10 feet 2 inches. But this is also a corner lot, so we would have achieved the side yard. But because this is a corner lot, it takes the two front yard lot measurements, which are 25 feet. Notwithstanding the fact that this is a corner lot, as the Boston Planning memo talks about, it's very consistent with the setbacks of the neighbors on both Ellard Road and Wood Ave. And then finally, off-street parking. So with the two new units would require two, four parking spaces, and we proposed three. The last time we were in front of you, we had five. So we brought that down. I'll pause there, Madam Chair, and see if there are any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yes, it seems that there is plenty of street parking, especially on Ellard Street, Ellard Road. And I'm just thinking, with the creation of those three parking spaces, it seems that you are using most of the open space that could be used for the residents just to create three parkings and space for the cars to maneuver. So have you considered just having two parking spaces and creating more open space for the residents?
Like, you read my mind that this comment was going to come. It was precisely what the Boston Planning memo stated. They have supported every variance except for the parking variance, and they said that we should consider two and create a little bit more open space. Obviously, we wanted the three. It was, the neighborhood wants the three, and they pushed us, they want more than three. But, but I was expecting this, Mr. Valencia. And, you know, if you put a proviso for two, that would result in more open space. And through the Boston Planning Design Review, we would be able to make it in the exact right place. So my answer is if you're, if that's going to be a recommendation, we would accept that, of course.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Hyde Park Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on August 6th, where many abutters voiced opposition regarding the care of the property, parking, and broken promises from the owner to provide information. They then presented to the East River Neighborhood Association, who supported the proposal. Thank you for your time. When the mayor's office of neighborhood services would like to defer to the board for the judge next time.
Thank you.
Hi, Dan.
Hi, yes, my name is Dan Hall. I'm in a butter to the, to the property. Our concerns are still arising that the, that the property owner, you know, he's not upkeeping with the property and the limited amount of parking spaces have now fluctuated onto Lewiston Street. I understand that they are going to put in new parking spaces, but if they do that, and it's going to take away from the on-street parking because you're going to have a gap, you know, to fill the driveway, and all that parking is going to come onto Lewiston Street. You know, there's disabled veterans around still who have issues with the parking and the, the property itself, you know. We made a couple of complaints and about the property, about having propane tanks, loose electrical wires. I know that the lawyer said, Mr. Ross said, that there had been a management company doing things to the, to the property, but the owner has still not left out any type of management number on the front or anything like that since last year. And we've been asking for him to do that, just to be, you know, more forthcoming and communicating. Also, there was a, a file, excuse me, there was something. My wife made a complaint because there was a tenant living in the attic. And when we looked at the floor plans, there wasn't anything that the, that the owner said that there was a loft in the attic space. So we just had questions about that and concerns about that as well, as, you know, we haven't gotten any answers about that, and we're just opposed to it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No, no additional
No, no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, we would forward a motion of approval if the proviso, the proponent keep working with the planning department, and also for the proponent to remove one parking space for a maximum of two, and improve the parking configuration to increase, to improve open space, use of open spaces.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberge. Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much, have a nice day.
That's, the next case we have is case BOA one-five-eight-six-one-three-six, with the address of one-ten to one-fourteen Business Street. This is also a cannabis case. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Hello, my name is Donald Rodriguez. I am here as the CEO of Bean Collective LLC, located at one-ten, one-fourteen Business Street, AKA one-six-one Reservation Road in Hyde Park, Mass. We are requesting a buffer zone variance from the Boston Zoning Board. We operate in online dispensary with home delivery and seek relief from proximity restriction due to Sweet Wellness four-twenty LLC, located at twelve-ninety-five, twelve-ninety-seven River Street. The purpose of this presentation is to demonstrate why Bean Collective should, low-impact model should qualify for zoning board relief. Our business overview, we're located at one-six-one Reservation Road. We have our operations, we are online dispensary with home delivery. The unique aspects of our business is that we have no storefront, no signage, no onsite customers. We are within proximity to Sweet Wellness four-twenty LLC, within a distance of four-point-two-eight miles, or twenty-one-hundred-six feet from Sweet Wellness, in walking distance. We do want to point out that we have contrasting models. Sweet Wellness offers a storefront, growth facility, and delivery. Bean Collective focuses primarily on online orders and home delivery. The justifications for the variance, we do have a low-impact, no storefront, to reduce foot, foot traffic, we are only online delivery, so we won't have any foot traffic there. Our operations are pretty discreet, we won't have any signage on the buildings, nor on the packaging that the customers receive. We have a high-security focus, we have advanced protocols for both delivery drivers and onsite. We're within community compliance, we have received community support by community stakeholders, including the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, and a letter of non-opposition from our district counselor. Again, we have a pretty comprehensive security plan laid out, we have minimal impacts, no physical, no, no public access, location, there won't be any foot traffic as we are primarily delivering. I believe we align with the zoning board objectives, we have neighborhood compatibility, Bean Collective's model promotes safety and minimal disruption. I am a social equity awardee, as well as a state social equity awardee for Boston, as well as Massachusetts, and we're also veteran-owned. It supports local and economic growth, as majority owners both state an awardee of the social equity program. It's coexistence with community growth. A market differentiates from Sweet Wellness, as they offer a full-service experience. Bean Collective provides a private, delivery-only option, serving different customer needs. It's also economic, pardon, economic benefit, with job creation, both businesses generate employment across different roles. The revenue combined operations increase local tax revenue for community projects, we enhance consumer choice, we also offer a wider range of support, you know, to a competitive and safe regulated market, taking away from the unregulated market. The key points is that we're a very minimal-impact company, we have strong community support, and we believe we align with ZBA goals. We request approval for buffer zone relief to allow us responsible, low-profile, low-profile operation that serves Hyde Park. Bean Collective's discreet, secure-delivery model can coexist with Sweet Wellness, enhancing community options and supporting Hyde Park's growth. We respectfully request a buffer zone variance approval.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Can, can you just explain how this delivery, where the cars are parking that are loading and, and operating the delivery service?
Yes, we are going to smart, start off with a pretty small delivery company. We'll have three Toyota Priuses located onsite, they'll be parked with inside of the, with, inside of our location, onsite of our location.
Okay.
Any questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, this time the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board, some background information, the community process, ONS had conducted a public meeting on June fourth, was attended by roughly half a dozen residents, they had questions for the applicant regarding security, operations related to delivering the product, as well as receiving deliveries of bulk orders, the applicant was able to address those questions and provide answers. Several residents were very impressed with his service to the country in our armed forces. The applicant then went on to meet with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, securing their support. Our office did receive one letter in opposition, which we believe we forwarded to the board regarding a butter, a commercial of butter with concerns related to parking. With that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Well, that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Take one.
Mr. Stemberge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Ye-yes.
Better Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
We have case BOA one-six-two-one-seven-three-eight, with the address of seventy-seven to seventy-nine Reedville Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you very much, my name is Timothy Burke, I'm the architect for the project, I have a business address of one-forty-two Berkeley Street in Boston. The project before you is an existing building, we're not proposing any changes in terms of size of the building. My client, Lisa Evans, is on the call, she purchased the building as a three-family, but it is, was, it's technically a two-family, so we're looking to legalize it as a three-family. I actually worked on this building fifteen years ago, and it was, it hasn't changed since then. The, Lisa is an owner of the We Grow Micro Greens Farm, which is adjacent to this property. It's an interesting, in addition to Hyde Park, to have a farm, and as part of the work, there is an existing store in the, on the lower right-hand side of the screen, you can see it's labeled office here. Originally, it was built as sort of a corner store, but there's not much use for those anymore, so Lisa would like to turn that into an office for the operation of the farm, which feels a great use of that space. The three units, as I mentioned, are existing, they have, the first floor unit is eight-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet, and then the other two units are on the second and third floor, each of those are six-hundred-and-forty square feet. The, the site is in a 2F five-thousand district, it does have a, a large lot for the district at nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet, and this site is also ideally located for a commuter, it's about a ten-minute walk to the Reedville commuter rail station, and also right on a bus route. So, as we, in terms of the zoning variances, the use, of course, is, the three-family use and the office are forbidden in this district. The open space was cited, the open space requirement for three units would be six-thousand-four-hundred-and-six square feet, and we're at six-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight, so we're actually quite close to that. And then the parking was the other citation. There is an existing driveway and curb cut on the left-hand side of the house, and, and during the meetings with the neighborhood, that seemed to be a primary issue, and our feeling was, because of this commuter situation, that we don't, we thought the parking was sufficient, but, you know, if the board thought we needed to add spaces, we certainly could do that as a condition of the approval. We have the room in the back, we would prefer to keep it open space for the neighbors in terms of grass and trees, but that, I think that sums up what we're looking to do, I think it's a great use of the building, because it's had fallen into disrepair, and the new owner is going to fix it up and make it, you know, look like a good part of the neighborhood. The last slide here in my presentation, those are some elevations of the house, and then the last slide, you know, the other issue was having a three-family, the proposal of seventy-seven, seventy-nine Reedville shown in red on this map, and, and then I highlighted in blue all the other multifamilies in this neighborhood, so we don't feel it's a strange thing to have this, we're not changing the footprint or adding any square footage, and we think it's a great use of this property, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So, just to compare the other units that you've highlighted, so they, they're all, it looks like they're all also minimum three units, does any of them have mixed use as you're proposing with that office on the ground level?
Well, the seventy-five Reedville has a commercial element, but it's vacant at the moment, so.
Okay.
The, you know, the office space is existing, we would just like to convert it from the originally store use to the office use.
Okay, are there questions from the board?
I have a question, Madam Chair, can the applicant elaborate on how the office use will operate, you know, is it, will it function more as a home office, or will there be people visiting, or customers, or, I don't, I don't know?
No, it won't be used for sales of any of the produce from the farm, you can see that in the green there behind you, but it's only just for administration of the farm operation, so they do not anticipate visitors to the office.
I'm sorry, how many employees will be there?
I believe just one, one or two people in the office, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Bearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Joe Remy Bembry, I am the Community Engagement Specialist for the Hyde Park Neighborhood. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutis meeting held on July twenty-ninth, lightly attended, and the only inquiry was parking, which was addressed. They then went to present before the Reedville Watch Group, where concerns were voiced regarding parking, increased density, owner or rental occupancy, trees, and traffic. The community did express a desire for a follow-up meeting to address ongoing concerns and provide further input. We have also received a ninety-four signature petition from the Reedville Watch Group in three letters of opposition. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to defer to the board for the judgment at this time.
Sorry, Mr. Bembry, just for the record, can you clarify the petition, ninety-four petition was for or against?
Uh.
I, I just missed that.
I apologize.
I'm sorry?
It is in opposition.
In opposition, okay, thank you.
Laura? Can you state the reason for the opposition, the petition in opposition?
Uh, I can, just a moment.
Laura?
Yes, my name is Christine Sims, Madam Chair and members of the board, I have been asked, I live at seventy-five Reedville Street, I am a direct abutter, I'm a member of the Reedville Neighborhood Watch Group, and I've been asked to give public testimony on behalf of the ninety-four neighbors and the abutters who signed the petition of opposition to the appeal. Our neighborhood members asked me to represent them and to state for public record that we are collectively against the granting of this appeal. At issue are the numerous code violations listed in the appeal, the parties involved are being asked, are asking the neighborhood to bend their, to their desires, and to increase their business footprints here in our community, without respect for those who have, in many cases, lived here all of their lives. The farm has grown far beyond the scope of design that allowed the business to enter our neighborhood, and it continues to expand. The code violations are many, too many to burden our area with increased congestion to the neighborhood. We have submitted letters to the Board of Appeal explaining in greater detail the neighborhood concerns. The house at seventy-seven, seventy-nine Reedville Street is outlined as having insufficient open space per unit, and yet the parties ask for dismissal of a regulation that would provide comfortable living to potential renters. Of additional concern is a health facility directly located across the street from the little building where they are asking to put a business office for the We Grow Micro Greens proposed office space. Ambulances and other vehicles need clear access to care for the patients there, and we already have street congestion with the vehicles parking on both sides of the street and bus traffic. Renters also should be allowed the number of parking spaces dictated by regulations of the city, and certainly vehicular and pedestrian traffic would appreciate adequate space to navigate the street. As has been stated in the appeal, three of the violations are listed as forbidden, and yet the appellant has made no effort to conform to any of the violations, but asks to move ahead with their business plan. The violation comments indicate that changes in a non-conforming use greater than twenty-five percent are forbidden. The conversion of the little storefront into an office to be utilized by We Grow Micro Greens as their business office is disruptive, as there would be coming and going of workers to and from the farm located on Norton Street during business hours, and also potential stop and road traffic to business on Reedville Street. The community feels disregarded, and that the requests really are of no benefit to the neighbors, only to the business itself or its profit. The residents have expressed their dissatisfaction and have asked, what else is coming in the future? And for all of the reasons stated above, we collectively request that this appeal be denied. We did get the neighborhood involved with an approval by State Representative Consalvo and City Counselor Enrique Pepin, who agreed with our neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you for accepting my request.
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board? Does the tiny book which to address that comment before we proceed?
Yes, or architect work, but, yes.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, the, any kind of traffic between the office and the farm would actually be walking just out the back, you know, of the yard, so there's no additional vehicular traffic that's anticipated for the office, so we don't see any impact there. The, as I had mentioned, this has been a three-family for a very long time, and we're just looking to legalize that use, and we're providing some great scalable housing here that's not going to be too expensive for residents of Boston. And, you know, I think the, the farm is a great thing to have in the city, it's a, a great asset for, and it provides a teaching place, and, and the owners have And, and the owners receive a great, uh, uh, help from the state and the city because, uh, everyone appreciates very much what they're doing.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I will, um, put forward a motion of approval. I think a lot of, um, the relief needed is pre-existing non-conformity with like the driving or the parking and maneuverability. And I think the change from store to office kind of results in a more predictable use with traditional business hours and perhaps a retail, um, commercial use. So for those reasons, I'm supporting this petition.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ross, a second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck. Now with that, we'll take a fifteen-minute break.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Mr. Valencia?
Present.
Mr. Langham?
Present.
Ms. Berberaza?
Present.
Ms. Mewell?
Present.
Ms. Panado?
Present.
Thank you. Flow is yours, Mrs. Sembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We begin with the 11:00 AM hearing for case DOA 1659217 with the address of 355 Park Street. This is an MOH, Mayor Office of Housing project. And if the applicant and/or their representative or president would they conclude by the case, who's what?
Present.
Please proceed.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here before the ZBA. My name is Meredith Levy. I'm the Executive Director of Boston Neighborhood Community Land Trust. We are located, our office location is at 550 Dudley Street, and we work in Mattapan, Roxbury, and Dorchester. We are presenting today a proposal to build six units of affordable housing for first-time homebuyers through the Welcome Home Boston program, through the Mayor's Office of Housing. This will be at 355 Park Street in Dorchester. Just to give you a little bit of a background, we BNCLT, Boston Neighborhood, if you could just go up a little bit further up on this slide. We are, our organization, our whole purpose is to make sure that we keep properties affordable forever so that families can stay in their homes and can stay in their neighborhoods. To do this, in the past, we have, we have acquired 11 buildings, which we have rehabbed and made sure that people could live there affordably forever. For our homeownership work in the, so it's 11 buildings, 32 units, so that means 32 families are, live in our properties. We, with our affordable housing, this development, we will add six new units to be permanently affordable over a 99-year period through a ground lease. Our model is a model of community governance, and so what this means is we have a lot of eyes on the work that we do. It's not just about the buildings. It's about the people who live in the buildings and the neighbors. Our board is structured so that a third of the members of our board are actually residents of our land trust. A third are the neighbors and the communities around our properties, and a third are resource members. So the governance piece is very important to us. We are a member-led organization. This, we are working in partnership for this project. You can, you can advance the slide. We are working with, in partnership with Co-everything as our architect and development partner. And we are also working with E-Rise, which E-Rise specializes in affordable housing building projects. They are the entity that worked, that embarked on a Magnolia Woodford development through the city of Boston. And Co-everything is also an experienced developer. They've, they've either designed or developed, or both, 50 units of sustainable and passive housing, and affordable housing in Roxbury and Dorchester. They also share our mission of community ownership and engagement. This project, as you'll see soon, incorporates a focus on sustainability as well as it really focuses on our community-led model. So the building itself is a three-story building. It's a walk-up. We'll have, we'll split the units into two three-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms and two one-bedroom units. We are looking at a homeownership mix of half of these will be 80% and half will be 100%, split evenly across the bedroom size that I just laid out for you. I want to talk a little bit about the context, the neighborhood context. This, if you can, yes, that's exactly the right slide. You can see the proposed lot that we're, we're building in is 355 Park Street. Right next door, to the right, if you go back to that picture on the slide, sorry, scroll up just to the slide that shows, yeah, that one. Right next door is our building. So BNCLT already has a triple-decker right next door. So we have residents who live in that triple-decker, and one of our board members lives in this building. And if you'll notice also, there's a lot that is part of the property that we own, that currently has three spaces of parking. We have been, have, holding community meetings, and we intend to continue that process, to consider other uses for that lot. And it's very important for us to have that community input. So it could be everything from additional parking spaces to incorporate green space, public art, et cetera. We have been really engaged in that neighborhood in addition to working with our residents who live there, but down the street for the last three years, we've activated another public parcel at 381 Park Street. You can't see it in this picture, but if you went to the left and you kept going a couple buildings, you would see, then you would see the lot. So we hold, we've held many events there. We built a community garden, et cetera, and we've engaged a lot of people in the neighborhood. We think that we will be a really strong developer in this neighborhood, both for the immediate, the way we will construct the project, but also using our 99-year lease. We intend to be involved with this project for the long haul, and we will be a non-voting partner with the Pondo Association in the future. Okay, I'm gonna move it to our partners in this project, Co-develop it. I mean, sorry, Co-everything.
We co-everything, Meredith, including development. Hello, members of the ZBA board. My name is Miriam Chi. I'm an architect and president at Co-everything, and also one of the co-founders. Thank you so much for your time, Madam Chair, and everyone this afternoon. If we can advance the slides to show the plot plan on the next slide. We are working with the Mayor's Office of Housing very closely, including our project manager, Tiara Satchbull, who is on the call now, as well as Jay Lee, Design Director of the Mayor's Office of Housing, and Carl Heckmave, to come up with a design that maximizes the mayor's goal of reaching, you know, a certain amount of affordable housing units by 2030, and also adhering to the setbacks and the program that was put forth in the Welcome Home Boston Phase Two RFP. Haley, it would be helpful if you could drop the link to the Welcome Home Boston project in case there are folks in the audience who are unfamiliar with it. So as you can see, it's a, it's a rather small site. The existing site had a one-story garage that was condemned on it, that in the past couple of months, Tiara and her team worked diligently to take down so that it was no longer a public safety hazard. And we've worked with them now to propose this six-unit walk-up building that will be all-electric, passive house certifiable, and, you know, net zero-ready. So though we have a rather dense application of a building here, I think the unique opportunity to highlight to any neighbors or abutters who are on this call is that what we lack here in open space and off-street parking in this particular site, we are hoping to make up for in the adjacent lot, as Meredith mentioned, in our community process. Move forward to the next slide. So you can see on our site plan, we are trying to maintain at least a five-foot buffer in all directions for side yard and rear yard. And just to show you as a comparison, on the right-hand side of what would be allowable as of right according to the setbacks in this 2F5000, it's the yellow dashed line. So, you know, it would be a rather strangely shaped building that maybe wouldn't necessarily fit with the context of what's in the neighboring parcels. So that just shows you what would have been the setbacks as of right. Something interesting also to note about our site approach is that it's an accessible approach. There is somewhat of a drop-off in some retaining walls at the rear portion of the site, so the rear yard. And so what we're trying to do is bring an accessible walkway in from the 349 Park Street side so that folks eventually will be able to walk over there from the parking, and that would be the accessible path into the building. Next slide. So as Meredith mentioned, our entire ground floor, so it's a 2,000-square-foot building footprint, has two two-bedrooms that are MAB Group 2B ADA accessible, and then it's a repeated floor plan on levels two and three of a three- and a one-bedroom unit that adhere to the Mayor's Office of Housing standards for design. It is a walk-up building, and the mechanicals are designed to be on the rooftop. Next slide. So this will just give you the layout quickly. You can see the two two-bedrooms are in turquoise on the right-hand side, and then the three and the one-bedroom, the three being orange, which also includes a half-bath, and then the one-bedroom in yellow. Next slide. So if people are unfamiliar with Park Street, 355 Park Street is about a 10-minute walk from the Fields Corner red line stop, and about a 12-minute walk from the Talbotav commuter rail. We are referencing our neighboring buildings at 349 and also 359 Park Street. We're looking at horizontal and vertical siding and some push and pull with the entry portion of the facade. You know, even though we will be using high-performance windows, we're going to mimic a double-hung window, which looks a lot like the neighboring projects. And to have, we've actually removed these two front doors and now have a central entry per the Mayor's Office of Housing, which you'll see in our updated elevations. These renderings were from our initial RFP proposal. Next slide. So something we've been working on with Carl is how to add different textures of like, whether it's a smaller horizontal siding mixed with a larger horizontal siding width, verticality, some porches, some railings, and then also a breakup of the facade into one and two-thirds at the top, and then the bottom half, like in a horizontal banding with trim, as well as some gutters and downspouts. There are no internal drains in this building, so though it is a flat, it is a flat roof, all the water will be draining off to the exterior. Next slide. And so as Meredith mentioned, the most exciting thing for us at Co-everything in partnering with BNCLT is that their existing portfolio of homes is all based on existing acquisition. So what we hope to prove here is that there will be a new model with the Mayor's Office of Housing and BNCLT showing permanent affordability so that these income-restricted units and these sales units will just become more and more affordable over time as the market continues to increase. And we're also working with BNCLT to provide technical assistance for first-time homebuyers, marketing to their long-term local residents. And again, this means permanent affordability with resident governance in the community land trust model. Next slide. So a little bit more about the marketing and community outreach plan, extensive training programs with some of our trusted partners in the neighborhood, and then marketing and community outreach. Already BNCLT has like an amazing community organizer who's on this call, Marquesha Moore. If you'd like to connect with her, we've been hosting a whole bunch of additional community meetings outside of the regular ONS process. Next slide. And our timeline reflects that here. So anytime you see a green bubble, this is like indicating when we've had an independent BNCLT community meeting outside of the city of Boston's regular community meeting process. We understand that the ONS was engaged prior to the release of the RFP. And so in this process, due to the fast-track nature of the Welcome Home Boston Phase Two ARPA funds that need to be expended before the end of this calendar year, I've reached out to Anthony, who is our ONS representative, and he and Tiara let us know that we didn't need to go to an ONS meeting or a civic meeting. So in any case, we've been in touch with neighbors. Marquesha has their numbers. You know, like Meredith said, they've been engaging with folks just a few parcels away on Park Street, and we've heard a lot of feedback on how we could develop the site both in between these two buildings and this building. We did hear concerns of things like parking, open space, and also are trying to meet the Mayor's Office of Housing requirements. The last thing I'll say is that we successfully were able to collect signatures and written testimony of support from 14 individuals, 12 of whom I emailed in on time, which became part of the file. Some of those included some abutters who are unable to attend today because they're, it's during working hours, so I just wanted to voice that out loud. And that we are continuing to have community meetings and keeping residents engaged and updated. So if there are any neighbors on this call, we'll go ahead and drop our emails into the chat. We'd like to continue design conversations with you and hopefully build up a list of potential homebuyers for these future parcels, excuse me, future units. And I think with that, the last slide just offers some contact information, but I'll also go ahead and put mine into the chat.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Here in non-mayor public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office is going to defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant, they went through an MOH-led community process involving public meetings, notices going out to abutters, as well as office hours where they could connect with MOH staff and the applicant. They received 10 letters of support, including but not limited to the Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative and the Boston Tenant Coalition. With that information, we'll defer the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Abdullah Beckett for Councilor Brian Worrell. In regards to 355 Park Street, having received a number of letters of support for the project, the council would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Omar?
Good morning. My name is Omar Lawrence. I live directly behind the proposed location for this unit. I have a lot of concerns. First of all, the BNLC meetings. I have never been reached out to by any one of those members in reference to this project. So for them to say they had, they had an open network with the community is not absolutely true. As well as for them to say they have 14 letters of support, that is a highly denser populated location. So for only 14 members to come in support for that, you probably need to look into that to see why not more members of that local area did not, or is not supporting this project. As well as, I've been trying to communicate with the city in reference to what they addressed as the small retainer wall that's about 30 feet high and about 40 feet long that goes through the back of my yard that divides this property, which is currently falling over. I've been in communication with the Mayor's Office, ISD. At this point, I even reached out to my attorney because I'm not too sure what's going to happen with this retainer wall as it continues to fall over onto my property. And once this project is put in place, this wall will not be able to be replaced, and it will be a big burden in the near future. So I definitely asked the board to maybe we put this on hold and so we can figure out what's going on with this retainer wall. I am absolutely for low-income housing in the community. I'm not, but at the same time...
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands?
Yes.
Tara?
Hi, yes. My name is Tiara Satchbull, and I'm a development officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. This project involves a disposition of city-owned land associated with the Phase Two of Welcome Home Boston program. This project has gone through an extensive community process and has the full support of the Mayor's Office of Housing. I just want to say, I will drop my information in the chat for Omar. Our RIM department in the Mayor's Office of Housing is addressing the retaining wall. So I'll drop my info in the chat, and can you please email me?
Thank you.
Holly?
I just sent a request. I'll mute you. Am I unmuted? Yes, you are. Okay, thank you. I'm an abutter to this property. I live on Alpha Road, and I've been involved in neighborhood development issues for many years. I never heard of this development proposal until I received the abutters notice. I'm very active in the Melville Park Neighborhood Association. We have not been informed of this proposal either. I want to say I'm in favor of low-income housing. I think this is a very inappropriate location for what they want to build. The lot is way too small on a very busy street that really cannot accommodate any construction vehicles whatsoever. Park Street is one lane each direction with parking on one side, and as it stands, the street is often clogged. We can't get through it. Cars have to pull over to let trucks go through, so it's highly congested. But my biggest concern is that the proposal is too big for that lot. There are no setbacks. There are too many violations, including setbacks, the number of stories. There's no parking for this building. Parking is beyond at a premium in this neighborhood. And while I appreciate what the city is trying to do, I ask that you delay approval of this project until it's presented to all of the neighborhoods to whom it would impact. And again, I am completely opposed to it at this point as it stands. And I am also concerned about that retaining wall because it is a sheer drop to the street behind this property, and I believe even as it stands, it's very unsafe.
Thank you.
Gary?
Gary, you're unmuted?
Unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Gary Mendoza. I'm a neighbor on Waldeck Street, just a block and a half away. I'd like to say that in support of this project, I think, like much of Boston, specifically the site is very walkable, has easy access to public transit, and I think most studies have shown that people, you know, parking supply has the strongest effect on travel behavior. And if, if you offer a lot of parking, people tend to buy cars and choose to drive as opposed to using public transit. My daughter just turned 16, and she's, you know, saying she doesn't even want a car because she has...
Can you focus on why you're supporting the project?
All right. So I think that the parking is not an issue. I think that the proposed sale price is on par with affordability, and I think the project design seems to be concise and... project design seems to be concise and simple matters, using composite resilient materials. It maximizes the site so there'll be little need for yard maintenance and equipment to be stored, which will result in a lower deferred maintenance over time, so it could be a good affordable substance project for the neighborhood.
Laurie?
Hi, thank you. My name is Laurie Herlamos. I live down the street, about two and a half blocks away. I'm also a community organizer with a group called Dorchester Nocer. So I do a lot of work and understand the issues that we're facing as a community and many residents who are being forced out. I am in support of this project because this is the type of housing that we need to be building in our neighborhoods to create permanently affordable housing and to stem the tide of displacement. The housing crisis that we're facing is not just a housing shortage, it's a shortage of affordable housing. So when we talk about building housing, we have to be focused on building housing that's affordable for the working-class people of our city in order to be able to keep people here.
Thank you.
So, yeah, can I continue or am I finished?
Please. Yes.
Yeah, I understand that the meeting's going longer, but I do want to say I'm also a board member of the, a new board member of the BNCLT, the Land Trust, and so I know firsthand the commitment to community process. It does seem like there are some folks who haven't heard about it and really look forward to, you know, being good neighbors and continuing to work on this project together to sort of keep our community united.
Thank you. Minnie?
Hi, good afternoon. This is Minnie McMahon. I am speaking in support of this project as well. I'm from the Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative, also a Dorchester resident. I just want to underscore the benefits of this project for the community. Permanently affordable homeownership is so key. It's sort of revolutionary, and I don't want that to get lost, the permanent nature of the affordability here. It's so hard to find affordability, and to be able to do it and do it for the long term is, can't be overlooked. And then lastly, having worked very closely with Boston Neighborhood CLT and also had projects with Co-Everything and E-Rise, I want to underscore their commitment to process, ongoing governance, ongoing input and relationship with community. So this is not a team that's going to do like a one-and-done type of engagement. Thanks so much.
Thank you. How many more raised hands do we have?
There's one raised hands on the panelist's side, it's Brian.
Okay, well, he spoke unless he has something new to say. Brian?
Yes. Well, my apologies, I misspoke when I spoke earlier. I just wanted to, for the record, state that the council would like to be, would like to defer to the judgment of the board. My apologies.
Okay, thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can we, applicants, respond to, it sounds like there are concerns from abutters who were not aware of the process or not engaged, the retaining wall. Anything else you want to make sure you cover?
Yeah, if Tiara can respond to the robust community engagement that she alluded to, that would be very helpful, like...
Whoever on the applicant team, whether it's Tiara or, yes, the applicant...
Yeah, well, Tiara is from the Mayor of Housing, so it would be good to hear.
Yes, who would like to speak?
I can go ahead and jump in, and Tiara, feel free to fill in any gaps. So initially, when we received a kickoff meeting hosted by Jay Lee in the Mayor's Office of Housing in May of this year, we were made aware of this very fast-tracked program where also MOH would be kind of moving alongside us as new development teams were all awarded predominantly women and minority-owned entities that were selected as part of Welcome Home Boston. And they had assured us that though we would be fast-tracked and not participating in an official ONS meeting and then an official civic engagement meeting, that in fact, prior to issuing the RFPs, they had pre-designed the setbacks and the unit counts using an ONS process and a civic engagement meeting before issuing the RFP. Alongside this, because Boston Neighborhood Community Land Trust already has deep resident engagement and had even, as you saw in our timeline, conducted open meetings and outreach to the residents in and around 349 Park Street, that was their initial engagement to even decide if they should apply for this RFP. Subsequently, we've had additional meetings where Marquesha has knocked on doors and invited folks to come, and they've been Zoom or in-person at several events, updating folks along the way and gathering feedback. If you'd like, I can also send you some slide decks that we've worked on together. Be happy to show them publicly with everyone. And of course, like Omar and Arlene, you are welcome to attend. Regarding the retaining wall, this is an issue that occurred with the demolition of the existing single-story garage that was there. So kind of as the tentative designation was being negotiated and handed over to BNCLT, Tiara and her team were working quickly to kind of remove this existing building, which then caused the problem that Omar is referring to, that I think is actually still under revision with another project manager gap.
That's correct. So it's everything that Mary had already outlined. There was existed community process throughout the Phase Two RFP, as well as the encouraged, like Mary said, the development team to have additional community engagement, which they've had several meetings since they were designated back in April. The retaining wall is a matter that the Mayor's Office of Housing is handling through our RIMs Department, and so that's still ongoing. So I'd have dropped my information in the chat. If Omar wants to email his contact information, I could get him in touch with the right person who's handling the retaining wall on the site.
Other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have two raised hands, but it's Arlene and Omar that spoke already. Do you want to hear from them again?
Very briefly.
Arlene?
Yeah, thank you. I hear what you're saying about that you've already had community engagement, but evidently not enough because I've spoken to all of my neighbors and nobody ever heard of this before. So I think that it's incumbent to the development team to present this to the Melville Park Neighborhood Association and the other associations around here. And the reason I say that is because when I got the abutters notice, there were two telephone numbers, which I called, trying to get more information about this project. Nobody ever called me back, and I probably left 10 messages. So there's a disconnect between what the Board of Appeals and the development teams are trying to do and their accessibility to those of us who are not engaged with this process every day.
Thank you.
All right, also, quickly, the retaining wall has been an issue which the city has been made aware of a couple of years ago. And just quickly, as in reference to parking with this location, the gentleman that was on earlier stated how people aren't looking to drive if they don't have the parking. That's not true. We live in New England. It's seven months out the year, it's a close state, so not everybody's looking to make their way to the train station. You absolutely need a car in Massachusetts. You can Uber, but at that point, it still becomes a problem because now the Uber car is double parked on Park Street causing the traffic. I'm with the low-income housing, I'm just not sure this is a good location for it.
Thank you.
I still have two raised hands, Madam Chair. The iPhone?
All right, that's just those two, and we're going to circle back to the applicant and make a motion. Okay?
Hi, my name is Cindy Geraldo, and I live at 385 Park Street. I'm also on the Boston BNCLT board, and I do support the new construction of Park Street and going down from my... For me, I would definitely say this new unit would provide affordable homeownership. It would also help prevent displacement because a lot of families now, it's hard to find places in Boston to live that are affordable. So definitely will happen some new units that is affordable, will help families be able to stay in Boston, as well as help to build some generational wealth. Yes, I do know we do have issues with parking on my street. I myself have to park higher up the street and find parking on different streets on different days because of street cleaning, too. I know that's an issue, but also it's a big issue when you cannot find somewhere to live. So I would think definitely this would help address the living situation, not so much the parking, but the living situation. So I support the new bill on Park Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Laurie, do you can unmute yourself?
Okay, thanks. I just want to reiterate that we are absolutely interested in hearing from all the neighbors and also not just hearing from, but really planning together. That is part of what we do, and I am sorry for anyone who was missed so far, but we're not done. A lot of the work that's undone is in that lot between the buildings. There's some opportunity here to think about what would be really great for the neighborhood, and we really will keep doing those meetings until we get it right. So we really invite people to be part of that, and we understand that parking is an issue, that there's a way to potentially make more parking available, as well as other things that are of priority to the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Here in non-mayhem, may I have a motion?
I have for a motion of approval with continued Boston Planning Department design review.
Second?
Take one.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Hello?
Mr. Valencia? I'm sorry, I missed Mr. Valencia's vote.
Yes, only my sound is not working well. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Langham?
No.
Mrs. Bedevarazo?
I'm going to say yes, but to encourage the developer team to work with the Mayor of Housing to ensure that you actually go to the associations versus inviting them in with updates on the project.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes, I think the addition of these units are a huge benefit to the city.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries, but I would agree with Ms. Bedevarazo as far as improved communication, you know, it's while you want to fast-track things, you also want to make sure that you're keeping abutters informed along the way. Thank you.
So with that, we go to the rediscussion as scheduled for 11:30. We have two companion cases to begin with, first being Case BOA 1616380 with the address of 36 Leyden Street. Along with that, we have Case BOA 1616384 with the address of 36A Leyden Street. If the applicant's or the representative are present, would they please explain cases to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, David Grotis, who's also on the call, and we also had David Choi, who's the architect, on the call as well. The project that you're looking at, and this is a good rendering of it, is 36 and 36A Leyden Street, and the proposal is to subdivide an existing parcel, keeping the building, which is on the left, the existing two-family structure, and to erect a new three-unit condominium building on the right on a piece of the parcel. We are also creating two driveway spaces on-site that would hold two tandem parking spaces on each side. It's important to note that this project was filed back in November 28th of 2022, and we had started process long before Plan East Boston had actually come into effect, which was in April 24th of 2024, although, and we're going to go through the changes, this project went through a number of modifications to really try to comply with that, even though we were cited under the old Article 53 code, so we were not cited under Plan East Boston. All of the refusals and violations, as noted, are the old code that were cited because of the timeline that we started with. If we could go to the next slide, please, Madam Chair, Madam Ambassador. This is just an aerial view of this section of Leyden Street that then leads out onto the highway up to Route 1A. If we go to the next slide. So this is an important slide. You can see the building originally filed, and we had three meetings with the Orion Heights Civic Association, three separate abutter meetings. When we had started this project prior to the Plan East Boston, this was proposed as a 10-unit building on-site, and you can see here it had three roof decks, and we had two affordable housing units, one of them being voluntary as well. As time went on, we scaled this project down, and so we went from 10 to nine, down to eight, four, and then ultimately three that we're presenting today. But just to give you an idea of the existing buildings and sort of streetscape, to the right of us is a townhouse condo building. There are 10 of them at three stories. Across the street directly, there are four-story condominium buildings, two diagonal, and then one directly across from us with some townhouses that are three-story. And the building that comes right to the corner across the street is an apartment-style complex. Next to us is a one-family on the left side, a number of twos, and then a brand-new four-story development that's a six-unit as you come closer to the corner. So there's a mix of housing stock within this area. If we could go to the next slide, please. If we go to the next slide, it's actually a better slide. Thank you. So this is the existing two-family that's on the site, and as you can see, there's this hot-topped area that had been used for some parking, but is a really big space, and that's where we're proposing to build the new structure with the driveway in the middle. And behind us is actually a hill. It's all green space in the back as well. If we could go to the next slide, please. And so this is, this is good. So this shows you our new building, which lines up very close to the buildings on the right, and there's a big green buffer space to those buildings on the right as well. We actually, as we went through this process, really tried to comply with many of the requirements of the Plan East Boston, including height. We're at 32 feet in height, which is below the 35-foot requirement. We're very close on the building lot coverage, which asks for 40%. As you know, parking is no longer required, although we were cited for parking originally, and we knew that was a concern to the community, so we did put two tandem spaces on the right and two on the existing structure on the left, as we sort of worked through the process as well. We actually reduced and changed the height, depth, and front yard, and reduced the massing on the building as we went along through the process. If we could go to the next slide, please. And so this is just the site plan. You can see the two curb cuts. There's an existing very large curb cut that's on the site now that would be altered. And so we have a 10-foot curb cut in the middle with pavers, and then a nine-and-a-half-foot curb cut on the left side of the existing structure. These units are all pretty similar, except the first floor is connected to a living space in the basement. If we go to the next slide, making that unit a little over 2,000 square feet because it is connected to the basement. And then as you go to the upper level, which is on the ground level, that has two bedrooms. And the second and third floor are both three-bedroom units at 1,135 square feet each. And if we go to the next slide, you can see that a little bit better. Our rare setback on the existing building, the two-family, is almost 25 feet. On the newly erected building, it's 10 feet, 3 inches, and we really tried to keep that pitched roof designed to keep with the sort of the contours of the neighborhood and the neighborhood design in this particular area. With that, I can pause and... design in this particular area. With that, I can pause and answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. Now take public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Ava Jones, representing the mayor's office of neighborhood services. Regarding 36 Leyden Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abutters meeting held on January 10th of this year, which at the time of the meeting, the community was in opposition to the proposal. Additionally, the proposal was also reviewed by the Orient Heights Civic Association, which expressed opposition to, excuse me, which expressed opposition, citing frustration that Plan East Boston is not being adhered to, despite Attorney Drago expressing that they would be grandfathered in. And they did vote in opposition of the proposal with a vote of 15 no and 7 yes. At this time, the mayor's office of neighborhood services defers to the board's decision. Thank you for your time and consideration, everyone.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Sebastian Power from Councilor Colletta's office. At this time, based on community opposition and in not compliance with Plan East Boston, the council would like to go in opposition of this project. Thank you.
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. To respond to the concerns about Plan East Boston?
Yes, Madam Chair. So again, this, this project was filed, much different project when we started at 10 units. And that was long before Plan East Boston had come into existence. And we didn't even know what Plan East Boston was going to bring for this particular area. I will say to the credit of the team, once we had listened to folks and talked to folks, we did hear that they wanted to see the existing building kept there, the existing two-family. And we heard a number of comments from our director abutters to keep, to make it no bigger than a three-unit building. So even with that, we complied with height, very close to lot coverage. We added parking, which wasn't even required under Plan East Boston, and tried to, even though we were long before Plan East Boston, comply with the majority of the variances in Plan East Boston. So I think we're very close to Plan East Boston, and considering this was filed so long prior to that, two years almost.
Can you comment on the two tandem parking spots that seems to be also a concern from the planning department?
Yeah, so we, so the neighbors had asked for parking. I think under the new, and again, this is where the old code kind of contradicts the new code. Parking would be required under the old code. Under the new code, where there's no more than three units, we would not be required to have it on the new building. If the board would ask that we make that green space, I think we would be happy to convert that area to a walkway and a green space area to add more sort of usable outdoor permeable surface area. I don't think that would be a problem. We were adding it just in listening to neighbors as we went through this process, but also we were at a much bigger proposal back then to where we are now. And I want to note, we're about a six or seven-minute walk to Orient Heights T Station, where the blue line is located.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion to approve the project with a proviso that it undergoes Boston Planning Design Review. I think the project, given that it was submitted prior to Plan East Boston being adopted, to me feels like it needs to be reviewed under the old zoning code. And we've heard that the applicant attempted to abide by the new Plan East Boston. And this is basically kind of the negotiations of the two. So you know, for that reason, I'm going to put forward a motion for approval with BPD Design Review.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Sure.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah?
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Next, we have case BOA 1599485 with the address of 309 to 325 Old Colony Avenue. If the applicant's and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you. And good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Adam Barnowski. I'm an attorney with an address at 255 State Street, Boston. I am here on behalf of Virtual Fulfillment Center LLC, doing business as VFC Eats. With me today is one of VFC's principals, Ahmed Cassam. The company seeks to operate a new restaurant with a takeout at 309325 Old Colony Avenue, in the building which abuts Old Colony to the east and Bidden Street due south. As a way of background, this is the former location of the Supreme House of Pizza, and prior to that had been operated as best casual restaurant in some form for decades. The underlying restaurant use under Section 37 is allowed by right in the L1 zoning district. The takeout element under 36A requires a conditional use, which was granted to the prior operator back in 2012, with takeout being utilized at this restaurant for a decade. The board's original conditional use approval included a proviso for this petitioner only. So the proposal before you today is solely to remove the proviso and allow the new restaurant to continue takeout on the site. The applicant conducted community outreach relative to the request with an ONS abutters meeting on July 17th, a meeting with Andrew Square Civic Association on September 23rd, and the team has been in touch with Councilor Flynn's office. In response to feedback from the community, the applicant has agreed to three conditions on the approval, all of which have been supported by ASCA, namely, the retention of no less than nine accessory parking spaces, the prohibition of third-party delivery services unless delivered by employees, and the limitation of delivery to motor vehicles only with no use of bicycles and scooters. On the first condition, VFC entered into a lease amendment with the property owner for the use of nine parking spaces during operational hours for the full duration of the lease. Double parking was originally concerned here. The operator had access to two parking spaces. In response to the request of the neighborhood, they were able to secure the extra seven spaces. On the second conditions, delivery apps have an opt-in program, which configure the account for in-house delivery drivers only and prohibit orders made through third-party apps. VFC will require that orders be filled to the business only. In the third condition, they have agreed to use only cars, and they will continue this practice briefly in support of the request. The underlying use is allowed by right. Takeout use has been permitted here previously. And as the nearby, the need for nearby amenities has grown, it continues to grow as residential units have been built in the vicinity, with several others that are approved or under development at this time. So again, we, this is a relatively straightforward approach, and we are happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the board. Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This time, the mayor's office is to defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, which went through a lengthy community process, starting with an abutters meeting on July 17th. That was well-attended. During that meeting, there was no concerns raised by residents regarding a number of accidents that occurred in the area. This is right at the juncture of a city-owned road connecting with a state road. There's a number of issues with motor vehicle and vehicle accidents, as well as vehicle and pedestrian accidents. There's also concerns mentioned regarding signage in front of the building. So the applicant, working with those residents, came up with assurances to have those nine parking spots on site, as well as promises not to use third-party delivery operators to limit kind of chaotic pickups, as well as assurances that they would be using cars only to deliver versus motorcycles, scooters, et cetera. The applicant went on to provide 50 letters of support. Those letters of support also make mention to the provisos that were discussed, I think chiefly the use of, the pledge to not use any third-party operators for deliveries. They met with the Andrew Square Civic Association, that was supportive of this proposal with those three provisos as mentioned, regarding the accessory, nine accessory parking spaces, no use of third-party delivery operators, as well as limiting to motor vehicles only. It seems since then, there's been some type of dispute within the ownership group, and I allow others to elaborate more on that. But with that, I know that the civic has since expressed concerns that they're worried that potentially those provisos might not be enshrined if new ownership was to take over and new parties were to briefly be in charge. So to editorialize, I think clearly there is community support for this, but I think they would like to see those pledges that were made during the public process be enshrined in some capacity. With that, I'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Laura Tolitano here from Councilor Flynn's office. At this time, Councilor Flynn would like to respectfully request a deferral due to confusion for neighbors in the community about a series of recent emails sent from one of the owners to the board, the civic group, and elected officials over the last several weeks. Councilor Flynn wanted to be able to support this project based on a good faith compromises and the provisos that were agreed upon with the community and the Andrew Square Civic Association in the interest of pedestrian and public safety. The use of nine dedicated parking spaces on site, use of third-party deliveries prohibited, delivery by driver only in motorbikes and scooters prohibited. Councilor Flynn wants to make sure that these agreements that were made during the community process with the neighbors will be honored, that it was not a waste of everyone's time, and that provisos will indeed be recognized by the board and enforced. Thank you.
Danny? I say to be quiet to unmute you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, so I made a statement. My name is Daniel Burkhart, and I'm one of the founder of the Virtual Fulfillment Center originally, and a co-owner of the company with a 20% stake. Last week, I, there was a deferral that was stated due to my, my TRO. So I just want to make a statement at the moment. I posted it in the chat, and I just want to read it in public here. So I want to formally address the recent actions taken by my partners and their attorney, including the attempt to request a gag order to prevent me from speaking at this meeting or with the city of Boston regarding the takeout license and the operations of Virtual Fulfillment Center LLC. I am pleased to inform everyone that the court denied the gag order affirming my rights to speak and raise legitimate concerns. I'm a founder, co-owner, and manager of VFC. I have both the right and the obligation to address issues related to the company operations, governance, and legal compliance. My actions, including requesting a deferral of the takeout license, are in the best interest of the company and its long-term success. The allegations presented in court to justify the gag order were an attempt to silence me and hinder my ability to ensure transparency and accountability with the company. I am filing both a civil and a criminal complaint against my partners for fraud, larceny, civil conspiracy, breach of fiduciary duty, and other matters, which directly impact the management and operation of VFC. Additionally, I want to address my exclusion from this meeting as founder, co-owner, and manager of Virtual Fulfillment Center LLC. I was not provided with a meeting link or invitation. Despite reaching out to the board, my attorneys of the zoning board of appeal, and my partners, I'd sign no response or opportunity to participate in this critical discussion. Given these circumstances, I respectfully request a temporary deferral of the takeout license for VFC. The company currently holds a temporary dining license allowing it to continue operating without disruption while this matter is resolved. The deferral will help ensure that decisions regarding the takeout license are made transparently and with the proper participation of all stakeholders. Proceeding with the license amid its unresolved disputes could expose the company to significant legal and financial risk. I urge all involved to prioritize transparency and collaboration in this process, and to ensure that I, as a co-owner and manager, am included in all future meetings and discussions. I look forward to receiving confirmation that my concerns have been acknowledged and that appropriate actions will be taken.
Thank you.
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Can the applicant briefly comment on this before we proceed?
Yes, thank you. And I'll start by saying that I'm zoning counsel for the company. I'm not corporate counsel. I'm not involved in any sort of litigation. My involvement's related to zoning only. What I can tell you is that the LLC authorized this application. The LLC is a party, is the only party involved in the application. The LLC is the only party that would be required to conform to the provisos here. I can tell you that there are five owners here. There is one owner, or there's a dispute as to the underlying ownership. At one point in time, it was thought that there's five owners here. There's an underlying dispute as to one of the five owners. The other four owners remain managers of the company. They remain members of the company. And as I understand it, the, one of the members had filed a TRO last week. That's the reason why we deferred. But that TRO was denied by the court. And so we're here before you. This is a pretty straightforward application. It really is in the best interest of the company regardless of who owns it. But I can tell you that the relief that they're seeking is simply so that they have the operational permits in order to operate, and that the provisos that have been agreed to, I think, I don't think that this application would move forward without the provisos. And the LLC will be conforming to the provisos regardless of underlying ownership. So we would seek that the board move forward. We did respectfully defer last time so that this TRO issue could be sorted out. The TRO was denied. And we're here before you today.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, there's a hand that got raised. It's now coming, Danny again?
The same person who spoke. We're not taking any more testimony.
Does, does Mr. Hampton have anything to add? I don't know if the, if the planning department has had more insight into this.
I was also gonna, Jean, I was gonna ask legal counsel for the ZB to respond on recommendations to the board.
Yeah, so Caroline Burkhard, ACC. ISD's of the position, those provisos, we cannot enforce them here at ISD. Secondly, in terms of ownership, we look at this application for what it is, which is it's applying to have its takeout provision for this petitioner only to be lifted. Whatever issues that may arise within the company is for that company to decide. And I would just ask that the board look at this application for what it's asking for, because the business applied for this, and the business is still the applicant for this.
Thank you. Does that address your question, Ms. Panato, as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so was that, may I have a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion for approval.
Is there a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
I know.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next case with the disturbance, makes us two, case BOA 1603160 with the address of 20 Hinckley Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Thank you, Mrs. Stenbridge. Oh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here with me is the applicant, as well as Beth McDougall, the architect. Josh Bloomberg is the applicant. And the proposal is pretty straightforward. It's to erect a new three-story or three-level one-family home, three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath. And in this rendering here, you can see what it would look like. There's actually a beautiful tree in front that we, that we're keeping. When we met with the community, that was very important. And that's why we do not have parking on the proposal as well. If you could go to the next slide, please. I think this slide's important just to show you the context of this particular area. This district is a 3F 5,000. Everything around us is a three-unit building, and we're proposing one, which we feel is very reasonable, given the zoning district. To the right of us at 24, and to that corner are three-unit buildings, one of which is a condo building. My client owns the building to the left of the parcel, which is a three- My client owns the building to the left of the parcel, which is a three-family dwelling as well. And you can see there's one, one, and another two, and the majority of everything else is three units in that particular area. The, both buildings to the right of us, again, just to point out, are three units as well. The layout, as I had mentioned, is there's a basement area. First floor has, if you go to the next slide, sorry. And that's just, that shows the site plan of the lot. If you go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. First floor is 592 square foot living room, kitchen, dining, and a half-bath with a small front deck. Second floor is 592 square foot, two-bedroom, one-bath with a small balcony. And then on the third floor, one bedroom and one bath. If you want to go through the plans, Madam Ambassador, if you go down a few slides so the board can see that. We tried to meet as many of the concerns that we heard. One was obviously height of the building. We matched, or we're below most of the buildings in the area. We're at 33 feet in a 35-foot height district. Our FAR slightly over at .84. .5 is what's allowed under the code. We meet the rear yard setbacks, so we have a big amount of green space. In the rear, we're at 30 feet, which is allowable under the code. As I had mentioned, we were cited for parking, although we're right near a bus stop, and we knew that. It was important to the community for us to keep the tree. We actually asked them originally on a prior proposal. We did have parking at the ground level, which would have removed the tree, and so we were able to keep that as well. And so, and if you look at most of the lots in the area, and the BPDA points this out in its recommendation of approval, none of the other lots meet or conform to the current zoning either. But we did really try to keep the violations minimal, and as a one-family for sale, we felt that was reasonable given that this is a 3F 5,000 sub-district. With that, I can answer any question myself or the architect.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has to defer to the judgment of this board. Some back information in the community process. As you heard from the applicant's representation, previously, there had been a community process for a different proposal on this site. For this iteration specifically, ONS hosted an abutters meeting on February 22 that was well-attended. Neighbors that were present on there, including Director Butters, raised concerns with the proposal. They did not like the side yard setbacks, feeling that it was too close to other neighboring properties, that there was not enough open space on the plot itself, as well as concerns regarding the lack of parking that would be provided. With residents testifying, it's already a challenge to find parking spaces. The applicant then went on to meet with the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association, which voted to oppose this proposal. Our office received 10 letters in opposition, including letters from the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Group, as I mentioned, and the Dorchester North Neighborhood Association. These letters were in opposition, as stated. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Remus from Council Fitzgerald's office. Our office has received a lot of, or had a lot of strong opposition with this proposal from the community and due to the more concerns about the size of the building being put on the plot available. So for that, our office let go on record in opposition to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea?
Hi, my name is Adrian. I live in the Abutting property, 18 Hinckley Street. I just want to go on record that I totally support this project since I need, since I think we need more housing in Boston.
Thank you.
Christine?
Hi, thank you so much, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Christine Hoag. I live at 210 Savin Hill Avenue. I'm also the planning chair for the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association. Want to thank you for your time. Would like to also point out that this is the fourth time that abutters and members of the community have tried to log in to express their opinions on this project. So there is a certain obstacle. I'd like to address a couple of things that Attorney Drago said, mentioning the fact that the other properties don't conform. I'm not sure that's relevant here. We do support development. We have supported Dorchester Bay City and other transit-oriented developments, but we also feel that a community deserves some green space. This is a 2,000-square-foot lot. Any other property that he mentioned is on, the smallest lot is 3,200 square feet. This lot is also particularly important to the community as a whole. We believe Dorchester residents should have the ability to gather inside yards, have their potlucks and community, you know, get to know each other, and that's what this lot has been for the community. If you were to walk up and down the street as I did, you would have, be hard-pressed to find that actual location. It doesn't stand out as a vacant lot as it's been described. It stands out as what should be part of one of the two Abutting properties. And then, there was some other thing I was gonna say, but can't remember it. So anyway, we were all very strongly opposed to this. It's not, it's not the, you know, kind of location for this particular building. We, as I said, we support affordable housing. We, that's not this. We support, you know, the need for housing in the city of Boston, and that's not this. So, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may respond?
I don't see any additional. I don't see any additional raised hands, Madam Chair. Wait, one just came up.
Let's go with all the public testimony first.
Okay. William?
Yes, this is Bill Barnes from, I live on Bakersfield Street, which is, you know, fairly close to Hinckley Street. Just want to say again that the spacing between, especially between 18 Hinckley Street and proposed property is small, is, well, I agree that many things, nonconformances existed, but this is definitely by far the smallest distance between the various buildings on that street in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Tom's Eitzel?
Hi. Yes, hi, this is Tom. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Sorry. So my name's Tom Murphy. I live at 77 Mayfield Street. I'm a director butter to this property, my backyard, the buttsay backyard. I just want to say I'm completely opposed to this. The yard that they're trying to build on is much too narrow. Last time we had an abutters meeting, I was able to show a picture or share a photo from a second floor, and you can really get an idea of how narrow this yard is. It's kind of ridiculous, to my opinion, that they're even trying to build on it. So again, we completely oppose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anton?
Yeah, can you hear me? This is Andrew Villa.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I'm an abutter at 23 Hinckley Street, directly across the street from this lot. I will repeat what has been said, which is that the lot in question is not the size of a, other lots on the street. It's quite a bit smaller. The amount of space on the side of the proposed structure is going to be tiny. The resulting structure will be completely out of character to the rest of the neighborhood. And not to mention, parking is very tight as it is. So this structure is going to look, in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of other butters, very out of place, if not ridiculous. So we're very opposed to this.
Thank you.
John?
Thank you. I'm at 24 Hinckley Street, which means I directly abut the property in question at 20, and I strenuously object to the narrow side width. It'll really turn what's essentially now my garden into an alley between two buildings, and I am strongly opposed to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. iPhone 29, I see you sent a message in the chat.
Okay. Do we have any other raised hands?
iPhone 29?
Yes.
Hi, this is Diana Wilson. I am next to, or kitty corner, I am next to Tom Murphy. I am the backyard neighbor of John Sheff, and I agree that it's a bad idea. John's property would become very shaded. There's not much room. I tried to get this man to help out with some tree trimming in the neighborhood. He was not at all interested in pitching in. I find that he's very, very selfish and very, all about him. He already has a property that has, I don't know how many tenants he has, but it's a large income for that household already, and he's trying to get another thing on that small lot. I think it's pretty ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elaine?
Hello?
Hi. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name's Irene Boyle. I live at 82 Auckland Street. I'm a member of Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association, and we are really, really trying to work with the city on these building, affordable housing, but it is getting very tiresome for us that the city approves unbuildable lots and then overbuilds lots in residential areas where we want to see families staying, and families are leaving the city because the city is approving no green space and no neighborhood feel. And that's exactly what this will do, especially when people are absentee landlords. They get what they want, and then they forget about us. Thank you.
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Attorney Drago?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first to point out, this is a taxable separate lot. We're not subdividing a side lot or any kind of area that's part of the existing building to the left. Our rear setback alone, I know we heard from some neighbors in the back, is 30 feet. There would be no shadowing. There would be more green space than most of the parcels in the area. If you look at the aerial view that I pulled up or as part of the presentation, most of the buildings are within that three-to-five-foot setback as you go, for side setback as you go up and down the street. We're actually nine feet from the actual building to the right of us. I know we heard from a neighbor, concerns about shadowing. We're nine feet, which would be almost more than the majority of the buildings have for a side setback in that particular area. This is a one-family in a 3F district. If we couldn't get a one-family, there's really nothing else that could be done with a taxable parcel. That's why we came forward with a one-family that's for sale. This is not a rental building. This is a proposed sale, a forced sale, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath building that is lower in height and massing than the buildings in the area. It was also mentioned why I brought up the other lots. Yes, most of the other lots are at around 300 to 3,200 square feet, but they house three-unit buildings on them as well, and we're proposing one-family house at a time that we know the city is looking to keep residents here. I know it was mentioned we wanted to, folks wanted to see more family housing. I can't think of a better way to create family housing than a one-family house to keep folks in the neighborhood. We really did try to accommodate every concern that we had, and the only other thing was it's just we don't want to see anything to go on this particular parcel. We cut a bedroom out, we pulled the back in, we've increased all of our setbacks, reduced FAR and bedroom count to get to where we are today. And the only reason, and it was not mentioned that we did not put parking underneath, is it was mentioned that our direct neighbors wanted the tree to be maintained and did not want a curb cut on the site. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval with PD design review. I find that most of the lots are already undersized for the type of zoning that's existing. I find the proportion of the building to open space a good, a good balance. And that reason, I'm for that motion.
Is there a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebrazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1553581 with the address of 175 Savin Hill Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Eric Zacherson, architect for the project. The owners wanted to apologize. They, as the meetings run a little long, they had to, David asked me to present the project for them. The project is to add a private roof deck for, for the residents who own the third lower unit of this property located at the corner of Savin Hill Avenue and Denny Street. It's a 20-foot-by-20-foot roof deck. It would be accessed via a spiral staircase which would come off of the existing rear deck. If you want to scroll forward, there are a few elevations. Yeah, yeah, so this goes, the roof deck, and we call it the rear of the property, but you know, to be completely transparent, there, it is, the right side of this drawing is Denny Street. So we did our best to try and push it away from the Savin Hill Street, but that does put it, make it a little bit visible from Denny Street. Excellent. And then here, it's a proposed elevation, so you can see how it would, do expect to be minimal on the existing triple-decker, barely conventional triple-decker. With that, are there other questions and comments?
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Liam, you can go ahead.
All right. Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Remus from Council Fitzgerald's office. Our office let go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Sorry, I'm not sure where our CS employee is. ONS conducted a community process on this. There was concerns mentioned in the abutters meeting just regarding proposed density. We received two letters in opposition. It did go on to be with the Civic Association that was supportive of the proposal. With that, defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Should I make a motion of approval with Boston Planning Department review?
Is there a second?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia? Sorry, Mr. Valencia? All right, he looks frozen. Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebrazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Valencia. The chair votes yes, the motion carries. We're frozen for a moment.
Next, we have case BOA 1515203 with the address of 42 Temple Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Lyons. I'm an attorney with an office at 80 Copland Street in Quincy, Massachusetts. With me on the call are How Team Men Win, the owner on the call are How Team Men Win, the owner of the property since December of 2017, Jennifer Ha, the architect with Hoi Architects, and Patrick Aime, the communications member of the team. This is a proposal...
Do you have two devices on? Can you mute one of them if you do?
I do not have a second mic.
Okay, all right.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Again, this is a proposal to construct five townhouses on 11,100 square foot parcel in the Lowell Mills section of Dorchester, it's in the Dorchester zoning district, it's also considered to be part of the Mattapan neighborhood, it's a Mattapan zip code, but it's really more of a Lowell Mills property, having said that, the existing condition is a two-family and a one-family on a single lot, the problem here is that it's a narrow lot which is deep, and also slopes in from the street, the proposal is for a .66 FAR with a requirement of .5, required lot is 6,000 square feet, the size of this lot is 11,100, the minimum frontage is 60 feet, the actual is 49.67, front yard required is 15 feet, and that is as proposed, side yard requirement is 10 feet, on one side, the proposal is for eight feet, rear yard requirement is 40 feet, the actual proposal is 76 feet due to the depth of the lot, there's no usable open space requirement, but you'll see in the plan that there is a substantial amount of usable open space at the rear of the lot as proposed, maximum number of stories allowed here is 2.5, the proposal is three stories, building height requirement is 35 feet, and that's what is proposed, and there's no occupancy in the rear yard by any accessory building, the design here is again driven by the narrowness of the lot, and to a lesser extent by the topography which slopes not only in from the street but down from the adjacent lot from left to right as you face the site, the fire code requires a wider driveway in order to provide access to emergency vehicles, and as Jennifer will explain in her review of the plans that she's drawn, it was necessary to locate the structure closer to the side lot, two feet less than required, this project's been under consideration since November of 2023, we've had two abutters meetings in November and again in January, we met with the River Street Association, we met with the Lowell Mills E-Board, and we met with the Lowell Mills Full Membership, as the discussion evolved, the initial concern of the abutters, mostly members of the River Street Association, was that the original proposal, which has always been five units, never asking for any more than that, the original proposal was for three-bedroom units with one parking space each, and they pretty much unanimously said that they were concerned about three-bedroom units bringing too many cars into the neighborhood, the way things work today, it almost seems that this one-bedroom per car, notwithstanding whatever the policy may be to discourage providing parking, the neighbors wanted the parking, this project also happens to be within reasonable walking distance of two stops on the Mattapan Trolley Line, the one on Adams Street in Milton, just over the bridge from Baker Chocolate, and then probably equidistant would be up River Street to Central Avenue, crossing the bridge there to the Milton Station, but back to the redesign, after the first meeting with the abutters, we sat down the development team, said, what can we do to relieve these concerns, and the decision was to come back with a new plan, providing for two-bedroom, two-bath units with one additional parking space inside the building, so now the current proposal is for five two-bedroom, two-bath units, each unit having two parking spaces, one on grade at the rear of the site and one within the building, there were other concerns about the design, and this is in the Lowell Mills East Neighborhood Design Overlay District, Jennifer went back again and I think substantially embellished the design, adding architectural features, some of these features are the result of the modification of the design, going from parking on grade to one unit in the space resulted in the need to create dormers in order to put bedroom on what is now the third floor, by doing that it also I think added some architectural features that make it more compatible with the neighborhood, and may not be shown in this drawing because there have been multiple iterations of the plans, one of which I don't think was returned to the board in time, but the current design does have a door facing Temple Street and a farmer-style porch facing the street, which mimics buildings on either side, so that's a bit of the history, the Lowell Mills members objected primarily on the basis of their concern about preservation of the existing buildings that are on the lot, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, so I won't comment on the compatibility of what is there now, but I don't think there's anything really extraordinary about the buildings that are there now, they're fairly simple, the zoning code discussion about this design overlay district refers to this neighborhood which really stretches from the other side of Dorchester Avenue up towards Central Avenue, first thought as having a Courier and Ives feel, and there certainly are many beautiful examples of architecture in this neighborhood, but what is on this site now does not meet that standard, at least in my layperson's opinion, from an engineering standpoint, the owner of this property is a contractor, he purchased it in December of 2017, this was not a search for a large parcel of land on which you could tear down what was existing and then build the biggest project you could find, he has rented these, the three units that are there for a number of years, he's familiar with the properties, doesn't believe that the existing foundations and the existing structure of these buildings are worth doing a rehab, partly because of the foundation conditions and partly because of the general problems that occur in renovations with latent defects and the impossibility to really know what you're dealing with.
Are these going to be condos or rentals?
Most likely condos.
Okay.
No guarantee.
Are there questions from the board?
I'm sorry, hi, my name is Jennifer Ha, I'm Key Architecture, and I actually would like to do a short presentation as well of the...
Please, walk us through it quickly.
Thank you, okay, can we go back to the first page, please? Appreciate it, hello, Madam Chair and the board, my name's Jennifer Ha, I'm Key Architecture, my office is in 53H Harvard Street, and I will be presenting the project at 42 Temple Street today, 42 Temple Street Lot is 11,100 square feet, it is very long and linear, measuring 49 feet by 223 feet, the lot currently hosts three units and the two existing buildings on the lot, the front building is a two-family, the rear building is a single-family, these structures will be raised to build a new five-unit townhouse development with a total of 10 parking spaces, five of which are garage and five are rear on-grade surface parking, can you go to page two, please? While the project is in a 1F6,000 zone, the Director Butters includes an eight-unit development in the south and a four-unit development to the northwest, as well as a single-family home to the north, the site is a six-minute walk to Milton's Central Ave Light Rail Station and connects to Ashmont Station, so the plot plan shows an existing driveway and curb cut that we will preserve, we will extend that driveway to access the garage for each townhouse unit as well as the five parking spaces to the rear, can you go to page three, please? Each townhouse unit will have two bedrooms and two-and-a-half bathrooms netting around 1,762 square feet, which includes the first-floor garage, the zoning table John has already gave the variances for, we'll summarize quickly, that townhouse using multi-family use is forbidden, parking is five feet from the side lot line, the required FAR is 0.5, we are proposing 0.66, the required lot frontage is 60 feet, we are, the existing lot line, lot frontage is 49.67 feet, the required side yard width is 10 feet, we are proposing eight feet, and the required max number of stories is two and a half, we're proposing three, next page, please? The five-unit townhouse units are mostly identical, each has three stories and a basement, the basement for each unit is for mechanical and storage use, the first floor will host the garage, a front porch facing the driveway, a mudroom area, and an open office gym and rear deck, page two, next page, please? The second floor will host the open kitchen dining living room with washer, dryer, pantry, and half bathroom, and the third floor hosts two bedrooms and two bathrooms, next page, please? The top drawing shows the driveway elevation, which also serves as a unit front for the building, it is designed to look like a two-and-a-half story, next page, please? The top drawing here is the north elevation, which is designed as a three-story to be able to host the bedrooms, each unit will have its own private deck on the side, next page, please? Next page after this, please? I'm sorry, next page after this, oh, oh, okay, I was under the impression, I think there was a, I'm sorry, I saw that the drawing was in the other thing that was open previous, yes, I think it was that link. Is there another file? Yes, this is it, I appreciate it, thank you, so the first page of this, please? So this page shows the revised renders, we submitted prior to the hearing, but our examiner was not able to send it back in time, we have designed an entry door to the townhouse unit facing Temple Street, so that the street-facing unit is only slightly different than the rest of the other units, there are no changes to FAR or building setbacks with this revised drawing, you see the front porch that John had mentioned and that front entry door, next page, please? And this is just a summary of the design changes that we went through for the project, so the last drawing at the very bottom shows, and from November last year, we had submitted originally three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and then five parking spaces for the units which were in the back, and so it was a two-and-a-half-story design, with the feedback from two different Director Butter meetings, they wanted to have in-unit garage parking spaces and then a reduction of three bedrooms to two bedrooms, and so in January we had submitted that revised design, and then in response to the Lowell Mills Civic Association, they wanted to have a front entry door to Temple Street, as well as a more approachable front entry and more beautiful front entry as well for the building, which we feel like we have done in our last revision of the design, which you can see at the very top of the page, and next page, please? Thank you, this is just another view of the same thing, it's just the other side, and you can see, next page, please? Here is a picture of the two-family home that exists on the lot and the driveway that's there, you can also see the single-family that's in the rear of the lot, and there isn't a picture here showing the foundation conditions, but we do have that, and it is a rebel foundation that is in this repair, it is very difficult to retain the existing buildings on this lot and to basically beautify the project with more units to make the project feasible, and in the next page, please? This is just some site context, this is the Director Butter on the south side showing the eight units there, and I think the next page shows our lot with that project, so that's the fence dividing our project, and I think John, if you have anything more to add about these pictures, you can...
The picture in the lower right is a project at the intersection of 6 Temple and 51 River Street, that's approximately 450 to 500 feet from this site, it's a 12,200 square foot lot with 14,339 square feet of finished space, nine units with a 1.167 FAR, four stories as you can see, and just behind that building is another photo, there wasn't, the file was too large, there's a four-unit townhouse building that's been there for probably 100, well, definitely 100 years, possibly longer, which mimics the one which is abutting this property to the rear on Sanford Street, so even though it's a 1F6,000 district, there are multiple examples of not only multifamily dwellings but fairly large ones, and the rear of this lot is a change from 1F6,000 to 2F5,000, and I'm fairly certain that every property on the adjacent Catty Road which abuts in the rear, they were all built right after World War II, they're all duplex townhouses on roughly 5,000 square foot lots, so that is the character of the neighborhood, it is mixed, we don't think, I mean, sometimes you might argue number of units per lot size, other times you argue FAR, they're equally worth considering, but if the discussion is the number of lots per square foot, we're really in harmony with what...
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Let's take a moment and see if folks have questions on the board.
Okay, thank you.
I guess the obvious question is, what's driving such a large, for two-bedroom units, why 10 parkings, why so many parking spaces?
That was the will of the neighborhood, I mean, that was, they were absolutely unequivocal in that first abutters meeting, and zero support unless we provided fewer bedrooms and more parking, we would have been happy to build three units with one space, but that's not, they were just completely against you, and I can understand it, those are narrow...
Okay, okay, we don't need any more, that's the answer, just, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Let's open it up to public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, this time the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board, some background information on the community process, this was conducted by staff that's no longer with us, but information I do have is, there was multiple abutters that took place, one of them was an abutters meeting on November 27th, we ended up receiving petition in support of the proposal with 15 signatures, a number of those were abutters on Temple Street, we also received one letter in opposition, also from an abutter on Temple Street, expressing concerns regarding the proposed density, the potential of what they feel is a historic building being removed, and they say it dates back to the 1820s, as well as just a change in the character of the neighborhood, with that information we'll defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie?
I'm sorry? Are there other raised hands?
Carrie, state your name and address for the record.
Carrie Boyd, 41 Temple Street, directly across from the unit, my main concern, as Connor had initiated, I also sent in a response today, but because it was late, I figured I'd show up, is the high concentration of the neighborhood, we've already had one major fire in 2019, and that just, you know, wind blowing across and catching several units, the street itself is extremely narrow with parking down one side, we are already seeing damage to properties based on delivery trucks and things having to pull off onto the odd-numbered side of the street in order to be able to get through on a regular basis, it is a cut-through street as well to avoid the traffic lights at River and Washington, so it does see a lot of traffic that's, you know, not residential, additionally, the, you know, the drawing, architectural drawings, it's very difficult, I think we're going to focus a little bit more on the photographs as opposed to the drawings, which kind of show the unit in isolation, as opposed to really how close it is to the massive units that are, that are located at what was formerly 36 Temple Street, which was a single-family home, and I just wanted to say to Attorney Lyons' point, yes, you pointed out quite a few projects, most of which the neighborhood was also in opposition to, so... So the idea that we're using those as precedent setting is a little unfortunate. And in terms of the Caddy Street, Caddy Street is a tiny street. It doesn't get very much traffic at all because it's actually embedded. There's no direct outlet to any major streets. And all of those duplexes, which were post-war duplexes, have substantial frontage in front, so there's quite a bit of open space around those units. And so overall, just very concerned about the density of the neighborhood and an unfortunate precedent. In the, I've been there since 2018, and there have been several large, highly concentrated things approved that, you know, most of that, there was a lot of, you know, issue with the neighborhoods. Thanks very much.
Bob, did you want to speak? I just unmute you?
Uh, yes, Bob D'Amico, BTD. Madam Chair, members of the board, the proponent stated that Boston Fire Department needed a wide curb cut for the side of the project. That's not the case because the fire truck is not going to park in that area. They park on the side of the street, and they basically run the hoses in the back. So I think that this is overkill, and I think that 10 spaces is just a little bit too much, especially with the wide curb cut. It's just, it's not a good idea, in my opinion. Thank you.
What's your alternative, Bob?
Excuse me?
What's your suggestion? Remove 10 spaces?
Yeah, remove five spaces, the ones on the side.
Okay, thank you.
And narrow the driveway width, right? The width of that driveway is wider than it needs to be.
Absolutely, yes.
Gary?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Garrett Tonofsky, 17 Temple Street. I'm an abutter for the project. I did participate in the abutters meetings and in the River Street Civic Association meeting and the Dorchester Lowell Mills Civic Association meeting, all of which unanimously were against this project. Yes, there was a request to have parking spaces on site. One of the problems we have on Temple Street is it's only 13 feet wide, parking only on one side of the street, and it's already congested. People can't find spaces when they come home from work in front of their houses or even four blocks away. We are, Mary and I are opposed to this project for a number of reasons. One is that this is Lowell Mills West. This is an area of houses built in the late 1700s, early 1800s, mostly for Walter Baker employees. Most of the houses on the street and the streetscape are single or two-family houses. This house is in a 1F6,000 single-family zoning district, which is the majority of the houses surrounding it. Yes, there are some exceptions, but it's primarily one- and two-family houses, single-family houses. What we're concerned about is that this proposed five-unit multi-family row house doesn't fit the scale and character of the neighborhood. And it will take up most of the lot. It'll be very close to the single-family house to the north, the houses to the south. I'm not sure they can have operable windows on the north side because it's so close to the lot line. It's basically, we're concerned about the density and the congestion. And the lot coverage is excessive. It doesn't provide open space for families. Our feeling is it'll result in overcrowding. The, you know, access into the parking garages seems questionable. Well, I don't even know if small cars can make it in. Concern about required access for emergency vehicles and deliveries, and again, in a very congested area. The Inspection Service Department has issued 10 zoning violations for the project. It's a single-family district. Townhouses are forbidden. The lot width is insufficient. The front, lot frontage is insufficient, and the floor area ratio is excessive. The number of stories is excessive. Side yard is insufficient.
Sir, we know what the violation...
Yeah, we know what those are, so I don't need to repeat those. So our concern is the larger developments in the neighborhood that have been permitted are really on the main streets. River Street is the site of most of those developments. But inside these neighborhoods is a much smaller scale. And we feel that this is totally out of scale with the neighborhood. We also made a couple of proposals. There are two buildings on this site, two very historic buildings on this site. One of them was, the front house was lived in by employees at the Krieger Piano Company, which is a very important company in Lower Mills. The house has significance. And the concern is that why couldn't we have a Plan B where if they wanted to do four units, they could put two units in the front house and put two units in the carriage burn, have sufficient open space in the back half of the lot, 2/3 of the lot, and have spaces off-street for parking in the lot.
Sir, let's wrap up your statement.
Yeah, so our concern is that it's really out of scale. It sets a very unfortunate precedent if it were to be approved. And it's basically being, it's too much. It's 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviseal that the project undergoes Boston Planning Department and BTD review for its site planning, paying particular attention to the amount of onsite parking and to the open area. And also would like for Boston Plan Department to take a review at the exterior design facing the street.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Stenbridge. Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Have a good night.